Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our August 13 Township Conference Agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please read the opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Kukovia?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Guerino?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Right now, we'd like to go to Mr. Sayers, and we give an update on redevelopment.
Um, yeah, I really don't have a lot to try to get numbers today, but we have supposedly tomorrow, I don't know if they'll be in touch with us, so unfortunately, all the numbers tonight. Um, they obviously may file their operations now.
They're not before the meeting.
Mr. Sayers, into microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Um, so I'm not so sure when it's going to be for the board, to be quite honest with you, but I, my understanding is that all the paperwork, I don't, I'm not sure if all the paperwork's been filed, but I know some of the paperwork has been filed upstairs.
Okay. Any questions from my colleagues on redevelopment? Yes, Ms., yes, Council, oh, yes, Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. A quick question, the, our township database shows that both Phase 1 and Phase 2 property taxes for August are not paid yet, appear to be potentially delinquent, which would be, of course, an event of default under the agreements. Do you, do you know anything about that?
No, I, um, I will check tomorrow, but I thought that they, I thought she said that they got the money in, but maybe I'm wrong. I'll have to check tomorrow, and I'll let you know.
Okay. Would you just send a, a quick email to the council?
Absolutely. No problem.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman?
No.
Any other council colleagues have any questions, Mr. Sayers, on redevelopment?
No, thank you.
No? Um, Mr. Sayers, can we talk about the golf course, about Rock Spring? Any updates and process and how the golf course is doing?
I mean, as far as we know, it's doing pretty well. They're, they're doing a lot of stuff up there, they're getting some good, um, good responses from people, not just in town, but from out of town. Um, so as far as I know, it's doing pretty well.
Doing like 600 rounds a weekend, very high.
Okay. So, anything on the catering and food service and?
Um, no, I mean, they are doing catering, and they do have food service. Some people, obviously, enjoy it, some people don't, but, uh, you know, they're, they're doing work.
Okay, thank you. I just like to make a note to my council colleagues and members, Mr. Lepore, do you have any questions for Engineering Department of Public Works?
Yeah.
Mr. Lepore will not be here tonight. Mr. Lepore's mother passed away this past weekend, and we will send our sympathies to Mr. Lepore and his families, but Mr. Lepore will not be here, but of course, if you have any questions, you can relate them to the council or to the Township Clerk's Office or Township Administrator. So, thank you very much. Um, moving where we're on, there isn't that much, so, uh, council, council liaison presentations, Councilman Kukovia.
Yeah, as long as we were talking about Rock Spring, I just wanted to ask a couple questions about the financials that we got.
Sure.
We discussed it last council meeting, we just got the, the new financials. It looks like the monthly operating deficit has been cut substantially, almost to zero, and it looks like a lot of that, a lot of that was the food and beverage, which went from like a hundred dollars to fifty-one thousand dollars.
Well, you've got to remember, the fir-, the very first one, May, which was a partial month, which was a rainy month, and they were just getting, really, literally getting to be wet, to excuse the term, and, you know, so June was, well, this, this, the month there is really the first true month of operation.
Yeah.
So, I think when you look at, when we get the July numbers, yeah.
Yeah, there was a slight deficit in the month, about forty-three hundred dollars, but, uh, it's a big change from the previous numbers. Is there anything else you can tell us about what's going on? You talked about the 600 rounds on a weekend, but is there anything else that's breaking particularly well or particularly not so well at this point?
That's what they're there for, so I, you know, that really says pretty much, obviously, they want to, they want to do more food, um, that's something that has to be branched out. You're going to, you're going to, whatever people are coming are going to eat, but the real, the real money in food is in planned events, that, you know, if I was planning an event today, it wouldn't be for this summer, it'd be for, like, summer, or, you know, later in the year, so that's the kind of thing that's going to grow later on.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's good for us, because we get more, we get more in our monthly operating fee.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, I just want to add on to Councilman Kukovia's, uh, yeah, actually, give him some information. Uh, I had been speaking with Chris Parker up there. Mr. Parker is a new manager. He's come on board a couple weeks ago. There's a, a piece, I believe, maybe, in the Chronicle, on the Tap, um, had, had an article about him. He comes from North Carolina, brings with him a lot of experience. Um, he seems to know, um, in regards to food services, so they really want to step up their game. Uh, had a rough start out of the gate, as, as we've, maybe, some of you may have had a few complaints about it. Um, so I'm excited for his arrival. I think that will help us increase revenues up there as well. I know my husband and some family members and friends have been playing golf up there, and they're saying it's, it's been packed, the beautiful days, it's been packed, but the play has been, uh, the play has been going smooth, so there is no long wait time. Uh, the rounds are going through, uh, you know, pretty quickly, are on time, and the grounds look nice, so, um, I can't wait to see July's report. I'm excited for it, so, um, you know, each month, you know, the weather, you know, we- weather permitted, if we have good weather, we'll see some better numbers from it, so it'll be exciting to see, but I welcome Mr. Parker and all the changes he's going to be making up there with his staff. I had the opportunity to go to a wedding, uh, on one, at one of their other venues in July, and they did a phenomenal job. The service was really good, uh, the food was good, so that was great to see, so, um, you know, time will tell, but what started off to be a little bit of a rocky start seems to be smoothing itself out. So that's my contribution to that conversation. Thank you, Council President.
Welcome. Any committee or liaison announcements, since we have you down here?
Sure.
Sure.
You know me, I always like my announcements, I always like to notify the public of all the great things that's going on in the town. Um, this week is Fun-Fill Week, I'll, I'll let my colleague talk about OSPAC events, um, our liaison to that committee, uh, but in regards to my Board of Ed, uh, first of all, let me say, um, with my Board of Ed liaison, uh, announcements, Comcast, uh, or the cable company, has not yet fixed TV 36 and 45, so as I'm looking into the TV, uh, we're just going to still be on YouTube, so hopefully, they'll have that worked out. A part is still, um, being, um, has been delayed, so I don't, I don't know what the delay is, but I pulled another call out, uh, to Mr. Siggy today, so we'll, we'll see what comes of it. So hopefully, we'll be on TV soon, but folks in the audience, you can catch all the council meetings up on YouTube, as well as the school board meetings. Uh, in regards to the high school, they have a great event coming up this week, the football and cheer committees have been very ambitious, and they're having, they're hosting a carnival at West Orange High School, so that should be a great time for all of our little kids and big kids in town, Fun-Fill Carnival, and, uh, so please, if you have time, stop by, and all proceeds will be going to the football and cheerleading, uh, committee, uh, committees. In regards, and I, I know Mr. Sayers, because I've been in conversations, and, and Chief Abbott, I know, thank you for coordinating with the school district in regards to traffic and whatnot. Carnival hasn't been held up there in many years. We don't know what to expect, but I know, uh, the administration has been on top of it and working with the, with the school district leaders, and, uh, and I had a laugh, because I said, welcome, you know, Mr., uh, Dr. Cassio to the, to the district, um, you know, with a big event like this, but it should be a good time, uh, should be great weather this week, so come out and support. Uh, Senior Garden Club was today, thank you to Laura Van Dyke and Noelia Perez for hosting them at the Toby Cat Civic Center today, uh, First Animal Garden Club, um, if you know anything about the garden club, their Unico had donated, uh, go, outside gardens and renovated that, um, last year, and so our senior service department has put together a lovely club, Rutgers University Master Gardeners is involved in it, and today, with what was grown over the summer, they made some salads and whatnot, and, uh, had a really lovely luncheon. Unfortunately, I couldn't stop by, but it, they had a really good time, and tomorrow, down at the town pool, um, our speaker sessions will be starting, or not starting, but there's been a few already, so tomorrow will be another speaker session, where, um, I believe this one is maybe on Ford, I'm not sure, I, I forget, but there've been various ones, 12:30, 12:30 PM at the Township Pool, and, uh, September 3 will be our Senior Citizen Annual Picnic as well, so, you know, a lot of thanks to Laura Van Dyke and Noelia, they've done a tremendous job, and, uh, we also now welcome our new Senior Citizen Coordinator, a Liveabilities Coordinator, that we obtained from the grant with Partners for Health, Dorothy Sanders. Uh, she is welcome to the team, she had started a week or two ago, and she's also a Township resident, so we really have a nice, energetic team put together, uh, that have been really, um, communicating with our residents and, um, really, um, been working on the programming. And Council President, I'd like to, you know, I, I had asked Dorothy if we could, she could come in, in one of the future meetings, so she could introduce herself, um, maybe in sometime in September, we'll have to look at our agenda, so, uh, lovely woman, and we're very happy to have her join our, our team. Uh, in regards to the Deacon House, um, there'll be a new roof being put on the building, uh, this fall, and we're excited to see that, so that was a big job, a very big repair, uh, the bids had, went out and was awarded, so, um, that should be coming and being scheduled for this coming fall. And I just want to congratulate the Recreation Department on, you know, again, this, this has been a really great summer for kids here in, in the township, even, I say, the big kids. Uh, Mr. Keo and his staff, very ambitious project, they had a drive, uh, drive-in movie theater, uh, showing Grease a couple weeks ago, and had a great crowd, um, few little, um, tweaks they need to do for next year, but very exciting to see just new innovative programming, uh, for our residents, so that was a good time. And last but least, I just wanted to ask Mr. Sayers if he could give an update, all our thoughts and prayers have been with firefighter, uh, William, um, William Holder and, and all of our, um, all of our first responders from the accident, so I just wanted to know if we had an update on, on that accident on 280, or did they ever get a final of what happened?
I can't discuss, I can't discuss people's health conditions, but-
No, no, absolutely.
Their, uh, Mr. Holder is, uh, still in a hospital.
Okay.
That's the best I can tell you.
Okay.
Um, he's doing better.
Okay. So, we just want to thank them for their great response and, uh, and all their, our thoughts, all with the families, and thank, we thank God that everybody was okay with that terrific accident, and Chief, thank you, I, I, you know, and, and staff, because it was a crazy day there, another, in West Orange, and, uh, you know, all of you work together, as you usually do, when, uh, come together in a terrific, horrific event such as that. So, Council President, that is everything that I have for today.
Sure, thank you, Councilwoman.
Let me just, I, may I?
Sure.
In our package this evening, there is an update from the Fire Chief on Will Holder, um, and it does say that he is still in, in intensive care, um, let's see, talks about the Fire Department, that a meal train has been established, and we're saying thank you to the community, really, about how many people have stepped up-
Yes.
-to support this fundraising effort for his family. He has been with the Fire, Will, Will has been with the Fire Department for six years, he's married, father of four, uh, he continues to recover from his injuries, while his recovery is expected to be extensive, his condition has been upgraded with the removal of mechanical ventilation and sedation as of date, as of today, so-
God bless him.
Awesome, that's right. And just thank you, really, to the community for stepping up to-
Yes.
-for the family.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
I feel like we've been gone for so long. Just echoing the same sentiments with respect to firefighter Holder, um, I, I did have the fortunate opportunity to spend some time with his family and, um, it, overall, the Fire Department as well, uh, Chief Vecchio, they're, they're holding vigil with the family just to make sure that they're taking care of the family as well, because they need support also, um, and I think Captain Adore Yassin was there on watch as well, and it was really good to see all of this food being brought in from, um, the local fire departments from Newark and other townships to make sure that, um, they're taking care of their family members, so our prayers are, are still with the firefighter Holder and his, um, family. Um, okay, so for OSPAC, Hair the Musical is going to begin on August, Wednesday, August 21st, um, oh, I'm sorry, no, August, that's actually tomorrow, I'm reading something else, August 13th, and, um, it is, uh, open to families, admission is ten dollars, there will be food, uh, beer and a wine garden available, please make sure that you bring chairs or blankets, and it's recommended for children ages 13 and up, please be sure to come out and support OSPAC, they've been doing such a wonderful, um, wonderful hosting of events at, at OSPAC, and, and I love seeing so many family members come together and build communities, so they will begin Wednesday, August 14th, August 15th, August 16th, which is Friday, August 17th, which is Saturday at 8:00 PM, so please be sure to come out and support, um, the wonderful talent that, uh, is here in West Orange. Also, our community band will be hosting at OSPAC as well, they will be on Wednesday, the 21st, from 7:30 to 9:30, it's a free event, um, that our residents, uh, have come together to, to practice and, and share their wonderful talents with our, um, community, so please be sure to come out and, and support them as well. The Indian Independence Day flag raising is on tomorrow at 6:00 PM, please be sure to join us, uh, in front of Town Hall, 6:00 PM.
Thursday.
Oh, that is, Thursday, my apologies, I'm, I'm already a day ahead, clearly, um, and then I, I wanted to just give a shout out to Stacy and Rob Reese for the tremendous efforts they put forth in the farmer's market. I had the, the benefit of spending an exhausting day from eight until three, when we set up, I put a booth out to talk to residents about the budget, because I think that that was just a great way to communicate, um, and I, I sponsored, um, face painting for this, for the children, so it was a very busy day, but I could not believe the amount of work that went into that. It was insanity, there were so many people there, and then it just all happened to work together and flow together, and, and I've never seen it this crowded there, and it was hot, but everyone was having a great time, so to Stacy and, and Rob, tremendous, tremendous efforts that you have put forth, and, and I don't know how you continue to do it, but they will continue until, uh, the 2nd of November, every Saturday, so please be sure to come out and support all of their efforts in, in what they're doing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman McCartney.
Thanks. I echo your comments about the farmer's market, it just keeps getting better and better, it seems to be just getting better and better. I was able to attend the community gardens this afternoon that, um, Michelle just mentioned, um, I love the fact that the Sustainable Jersey Recertification Application, we get points for having such, we get points for the farmer's market, but we also get points for the community garden, but I hope we're getting extra points for the fact that the produce that they're growing became a luncheon, so it was summer salads, it was eggplants, um, watermelon and feta, which was an interesting combination, and, um, spinach dishes, a lot of dishes that they shared amongst the, uh, master gardeners that are helping and the residents that are attending to the garden. Excellent. The Rent a House did not, the Rent a House Board did not meet in August, we will meet in September, on September 9th. I invite everyone to visit the West Orange Arts Council at W O Arts dot, dot org. West Orange resident Jim Horton has an exhibit coming up this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, from 2:00 to 5:00. Um, he went to, it's called Artists of the Oranges, he went to about 15 different studios, it's a digital portrait of the artist at work, and then the finished product will be, um, the digital portrait and the artwork will be on display at 551 Valley Road at the West Orange Art Center. That's this Saturday and Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00. The West Orange Chamber invites everyone to, uh, again, on Saturday and Sunday, this is Staples is hosting a back-to-school day, weekend, 20% welcome back-to-school products, um, this Saturday and Sunday, and I extended an invitation to everyone, Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park will be having, instead of a Muckers Bowl this year, we're having our Glenmont Garden Party, and, with, with the help of the master gardeners to preserve Minna Edison's, uh, greenhouse, so that will be on Saturday, September 28th, in Llewellyn Park at the Glenmont Home, um, please visit the Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park for more information on that cocktail party. Wilshire Grant is providing the food, and the Poorhouse Pies and Pints provides our signature cocktail. West Orange Environmental Commission, we meet every Wednesday at the conference room here in Town Hall, I'm, I'm sorry, every, not every Wednesday, the last Wednesday of every month, feels like every Wednesday, with the Sustainable Jersey application going on, um, and the Planning Department, so the Planning Department, I see Joe Albert is here, the Planning Department, um, Planning Board, uh, we have on our, we had on our agenda unanimously voted to designate, um, area in need of rehabilitation, the library here at, uh, 46 Mount Pleasant Avenue. Joe's going to talk about it, if we have any questions on it, it's on our agenda this evening. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman, thank you. Um, move on, when you were talking about the farmer's market, were you just talking about touch a truck? That touch a truck is, this weekend?
Oh, no.
Where the kids, I just, I didn't want to step in, but, you know, that, another great thing with the farmer's market this weekend, uh, there'll be numerous trucks, uh, throughout the locations, so the kids can come and see them, actually touch them, and, uh, we have to thank a lot of people for that, but another great aspect of what Rob and Stacy have done, it's just amazing, so, uh, come on down, have a great time, meet some new neighbors, get some great pickles, can't, I can't tell you, when the pickle man ain't there, I don't want to go, but, so everybody should come out for that. Tomorrow night at 7:30 is the pedestrian, West Orange Pedestrian Safety Board meeting at Turtle Bag Zoo at the Essex County Educational Center. Uh, tomorrow, we're having a major presentation, uh, members of Millburn Township Council and their pedestrian safety, they just created it, want to come and see what we do here in West Orange, because they're very impressed with, with our stats, and, uh, so you're all welcome to come, see the things we're working on. A couple of things that we were going to do tomorrow will not be done because of, uh, Mr. Lepore will not be, uh, available, um, and as I said, it was due to the death of his mom, who we all share our condolences with. Uh, speaking on pedestrian safety, I, I'm planning on a meeting to meet with the state troopers at the Totowa Barracks, because we need to work on 280, and 280 comes under the command of the state troopers at Totowa, and they need to bring back their tactical task force to that section of 280, it's the only way we can do some improvements, some slowing down of the traffic, you know, and, and it is, it is the way, so we need to meet with them and convince them that they need to come back and do their tactical work. Also, speaking on, uh, public safety, uh, I'd like to congratulate both the Police and Fire Department for the promotions that will be occurring, uh, this week, uh, we have, um, in the Police Department, we have Jonathan Schucker going from police lieutenant to police captain, uh, Sergeant Patrick Matullo going from sergeant to lieutenant, uh, Brad Squires, police officer, going to police sergeant, and in our Fire Department, we have Douglas Johnson going from fire captain to deputy fire chief, we have firefighter William Holder going from firefighter to fire captain, Phil Johnson from firefighter to fighter captain, and Ben Persquod from firefighter to fire captain, so we congratulate those great first responders, and we congratulate the Police and Fire Department, and to Chief Abbott and to Chief Vecchio. Um, ad hoc, last night, I was invited to the Livingston Township Ad Hoc Plastic Recycling Task Force, they brought together 18 people from all walks of life, from small merchants to large merchants and members of the Township Council, and, um, they invited me to see their first meeting of what they're planning on doing, uh, one of those things will be a mission statement, but the premier thing of the night was, they were very glad that I was there, because they want to work in conjunction with West, West Orange and a number other of neighboring communities to do this as a single unit, because, one, we all know that the state is a year and a half to two years away from doing what they want us to do, but the state would actually like us to be on a municipal level, level stricter, so I believe if we can work with them and work with a number of other, you know, townships in the area, we can be really strong, really united, work with our large, big bucks retailers like ShopRite, like Wegmans, Aldi's, and then also our small merchants who are also going to get hit with what we want to do. We don't want to just do a kick-jerk reaction to say, we're going to ban this, this, and this, because you have to remember, operations like ShopRite, CVS, and Wegmans, they're, they're paying a fortune for paper, they want to get out of paper, they want to go to recycled plastic, because it's cheaper for them to do plastic than it is to do paper, and just from ShopRite alone, the dollar amounts I got for them, they spent thirty-five thousand dollars a month on paper bags compared to twenty thousand dollars a month with plastic bags. Paper costs them 11 cents, recycled paper costs them 13 cents, so we need to work with them too, we need to also bring in, Councilwoman, look to you, is our Chamber of Congress, we need to bring in the educational environment, because we need to start an educational program, because all of this recycling is cultural, it's all a change of lifestyles, and I know Councilwoman Castellino has seen it, when she goes to the shore like I, that townships that have, you know, bans on paper and everything else, their shoppers are going to towns where they don't have the bans on that, it's cheaper, even though it's 10 cents, 15 cents, two a quarter, it begins to add up, and there are a lot of, um, exemptions, if you look at Maple Woods, uh, recycling and everything else, there's 57 exemptions, we don't want to do that. Whatever ordinance we do, I believe we have to make it tweakable, so that as things change and we learn new things, we can tweak it and make it a perfect thing, and, and that's what I'd like to see done, and I have a whole bunch of other notes, it was a very good meeting, they did say it would be an hour and 15 minutes, and it was an hour and 15 minutes, so, um, I'd like to talk to my colleagues eventually on that and get together on what we'd like to do, and work with our neighboring communities, do it as a cohesive, cooperative, um, benefit to all our residents, and not just do something ad hoc. Um, joint meeting, now, I never speak much about the joint meeting, but if you don't know what the joint meeting is, it's the division that moves our sewerage, and, um, we had a very big, uh, program that we've had to contribute to, which is, uh, the storm surge- And we had a very big program that we've had to contribute to, which is the storm surge construction at the joint meeting, which is located in Elizabeth New Jersey. It's a FEMA project. Each township that's a member of the joint meeting had to commit a certain dollar amount to the construction. Construction will be starting soon, but it's an anti-surge program. Because when Hurricane Sandy came, the facility was saved but sustained enough damage, but according to the consultants and the engineers, if we get another superstorm Sandy, it will totally shut down the joint meeting, the treatment facility, and will cause billions and billions of dollars of construction, repairs, and sewage treatment that will have to be borne by the townships that belong to the joint meeting. And just to another point, when people talk about their sewage fee, West Orange's annual sewage fee is the lowest of all the districts in the joint meeting. So I know people say it's 350. Yes, it is 350, but look at other towns, look at Roseland, look at the other townships within the joint meeting, and their sewage fees are a lot more than the township of West Orange. So just keep that in mind, but there is a lot that goes down, there's a lot of expense in moving sewage. It's very important, it has to be done, but there is a cost related to it, but we've been able to keep our costs down. Storage service, city's greatest, okay, state of central forest, downtown West Orange. I'd like to welcome two new businesses to the downtown corridor. There's Diva, Avita Hair Salon on Main Street, right across from Oak Barrel, and also SK Luxury on Northfield Avenue by 828 Barbers. And we welcome them to the community and their commitment to the township of West Orange. And other than that, that's all for me. So, thank you. Madam Clerk? Oh, yes, Councilman. I asked you in the beginning, oh, I'm sorry, you talked about rock spray, I apologize. Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. The Historic Preservation Commission is continuing to discuss some planned renovations at a major historic building and property in town that I can't talk about quite yet. Probably will be discussing this at the August 22nd meeting, 7:00 PM. It's likely to be August 22nd. There's, we still have to finalize the date, so keep an eye on the township website calendar. The Open Space and Recreation Committee is meeting September 11th, 7:00 PM, and we will almost certainly be discussing potential open space land acquisitions in the area of Ridge Road near the intersection of Mount Pleasant Avenue and Prospect Avenue. And we'll probably also continue to discuss updates to the township's open space master plan. And just to perhaps clarify, the Indian flag raising on Thursday is at 6:00 PM, starts at, scheduled to start at 6:00 PM out in front of Town Hall.
Thank you, Councilman. Sorry about that, I just love my, Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the township clerk's office on September 26th, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4th, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Guarino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our August 13th Township Council meeting. At this point, I'm going a little about procedure. I've asked Mr. Anthony Puglisi from the County Executive's Office to come here tonight and give us a little update on your questions on, of course, Turtle Bag Zoo. Mr. Puglisi will be, he's going to make his things. The questions can only be right now from members of the Township Council, because Mr. Puglisi has to go to Milburn where he's doing the same thing, but he has to be there. So the, he'll, questions by the council. If any one from the audience has any questions, you're more than welcome to reach out to Mr. Puglisi at another time, and he will answer your questions. Mr. Puglisi, thank you for being here this evening, sir.
Hi, thank you, thank you very much. I know I usually stay to a much later part of your meeting, so thank you for letting me go first so that I can get to Milburn. Before I start with Turtle Bag Zoo, this, since this is your only meeting in August, on September 11th at the Eagle Rock Reservation, at 8:00 AM, we will have our annual ceremony to commemorate the tragedy of that day. Like I said, that begins at 8:00 AM. We do invite everyone to come and join us that day and remember those heroes that were lost. And now on to Turtle Bag Zoo. So before I start, let me just give you a little short history of the zoo. It was opened in 1963. It's not, it's not going to be that long, I'm not going to go year by year. But before 2003, the highest attendance at the zoo was 165,000, and the most revenue that was collected was $650,000. And actually, a previous administration recommended that Turtle Bag Zoo be closed. However, there were schoolchildren in the area who came to Turtle Bag Zoo and they had a rally there, and it was decided to keep the zoo open. And surely after that, Joe DiVincenzo, who at that time was Freeholder President, formed a Blue Ribbon Panel. That Blue Ribbon Panel traveled to various locations throughout New Jersey, various zoos, and they recognized the educational and recreation potential of Turtle Bag, and they recommend, recommended that the zoo be kept open and developed so that it can fulfill its potential as an educational facility. So when Joe DiVincenzo became county executive, he made a commitment to make the zoo a destination. So those attendance and revenue figures that I had mentioned earlier, this year were on track to welcome over 900,000 visitors. That would be the second time in the history of the zoo where we've welcomed that many visitors. And also, for, as far as revenue purposes, we're anticipating to collect over $12 million in revenue. That makes the zoo self-sufficient so that it's not reliant, reliant on property taxes to operate, which makes it a unique facility on the East Coast because most zoos are not self-sufficient. They rely on some sort of support from the local government or entity to keep them operating. Another commitment that the county executive made was to ensure that the zoo had an education and conservation aspect to it. And to reach that, we gained accreditation from the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, the Zoological Association of America, and the American Humane. Through the years, various exhibits have been updated. I wanted just to spell a couple earlier ideas that had been floated out there. There is, we are no longer pursuing the grizzly bear exhibit, and there is no new aquarium being built. Those are two rumors that I've heard, which, they're not happening. So the latest project is the proposed amphitheater. And that might be a little misnomer, it's more of an education facility, more of an outdoor classroom. So this came about last year. Every year, the county executive sits down with his staff. In this case, one of the people was our zoo director, and the zoo director suggested that it was time that we beef up our education and conservation programs, and asked that we create a facility that would fill, fulfill our current needs. So the county executive has a track record of when a project comes about, having that project built without county money. So he went to the state, asked the governor for some, for a special appropriation, received that appropriation, got an additional appropriation from President Sweeney. Now, I know at this point that some of that funding is on hold, but we are confident that it will be released for this project, and if it's not, then, and we do decide to go ahead with the project, I'm sure another funding source will be identified by the county executive to replace that. What has got, what's got us here to date is that the Essex County Recreation and Open Space Trust Fund passed a resolution recently to recommend the hiring of a consultant for the design surveying. Really, it's a contract to do everything from the beginning of the project all the way through to the construction of the project. And that was done more as a, I guess, just to streamline the process so that that consultant wouldn't have to keep coming back to the body for additional votes to be taken, so that it would, it would be a more smoother process. This process has been followed in the past by the county. When we developed the All Access Playground and Community Center in Watchessing Park, that's the first all-access playground that has equipment where children of all physical abilities can play together. And that was just opened in July. Same process that we followed for that, down, down to the special appropriations from the state, we're following here for this amphitheater project. Just a little, dispel a little misconception about the Recreation and Open Space Trust Fund. That is the proper name, Recreation and Open Space Trust Fund. It can be used for park maintenance, historic preservation, open space preservation, and park and recreation development. Since 2003, when the county executive took office, the number of parks have been increased from 17 to 23, and approximately 500 acres of open space have been preserved throughout the county, in addition to funding a variety of recreation programs, projects, improvements throughout the park system. So now, let me talk just a little bit about the amphitheater. The zoo does have an amphitheater, it's located near the front entrance, right across from the reptile house. It is flawed in its design because it was not designed for education. There's no back wall so that visitors can walk around the entirety of the stage. There's no defined seating, people sit on the ground. And just with that openness with the back of the stage, it's not conducive for animals. They need quiet space before they, before the presentation begins, so we would have to bring them from another location to the stage for, before a presentation began. So that stage is rarely used for education purposes. We rely on the classrooms in our new education building, which was open within the last four years. And in that, in that building, when those four classrooms, we can only accommodate about 500 students per day. Now, the role of a zoo has changed throughout the years. I mean, when I was young, which seems like a short time ago, when, when, when I was a school kid and I went to a zoo, you just kind of walked around, you looked at the animals, and you read the little placards and saw where the animal came from and what its significant was. Today, we're seeing that schools want more of an interactive experience. They want students to interact with the animals, get more close up with the animals. So that's what this amphitheater is designed to do. Currently, it is designed, it's, we're, we're aiming to have it seat about 500 people. So with three programs per day, we could reach about, well, with the math, we could reach 1,500 students. That still doesn't fulfill our daily attendance during the height of school year or the height of summer vacation, when we generally welcome about 2,200 students a day from schools and during the summer from recreation programs. And like I said, with the three accreditations that we have, every year and every time that we go before those bodies for re-accreditation, they do look at us and look at the education programs, the advancements that we've made, and the one thing that they do point out to us each time is that we need to invest a little more and beef up our education programs. So right now, the, well, so 17 years ago, or from 17 years ago, the zoo has expanded by about 10 acres. So the footprint is about 10 acres more than when the county executive took office. That's primarily because of the African Adventure Area. With the amphitheater, we're anticipating that to take up one more acre, so it would be an additional 11 acres. And again, I don't, I don't want to minimize this impact, but the number of parks have increased and the amount of open space that's been preserved is a lot larger than that, those 11 acres that the zoo has taken up. If I can just touch on traffic a little bit, we are in the process of constructing a third parking garage on the site. And as I've said before this body in the past, we believe a lot of the traffic that occurs on Northfield Avenue that's related to the zoo is based on the recirculation of traffic of vehicles that come to the site, can't find a parking space onsite, and then recirculate back onto Northfield Avenue, and then up to Cherry Lane for the, the archery field that we've added additional parking there. Anecdotally, this past weekend, we welcomed 6,000 people each day on Saturday and Sunday. It was a very nice weekend. All of the deck space and the surface parking lot, surface lots were filled, and on both of those days, we had just about 300 cars parked on the archery field. So imagine if we had the parking deck open for this past weekend. That's 300 cars that's, that wouldn't end up back onto Northfield Avenue, 300 cars not on the Cherry Lane parking lot, and we would still have 200 spaces left open in the parking garage. So we think that as far as traffic goes, that garage will make a significant impact. I'm not saying it's not going, I'm not saying it's going to eliminate all traffic concerns because when we do have large events there, there is going to be some traffic, but I think the Essex County Sheriff's Office, working with West Orange Police Department, especially this year, have honed their plans, and we've seen a lot better traffic patterns and a lot better traffic flow through that area. Also, we are in the process of putting together the master plan. Recently, at a meeting that where West Orange was represented by Mr. Gross, the county executive did say that the, he would have the master plan completed by the end of the year. And while it's, the reason that it's taken a little longer is we've asked the consultants to update the plan so that it incorporates the new entrance, the new deck, and we've also asked them to include a more current traffic study into that master plan. So by the end of the year, that will all be completed. That's my presentation. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Puglisi. Do realize, Mr. Puglisi has to leave at 7:30, so keep your questions possible to that. Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, Anthony, for coming and giving a very detailed explanation. You know, we've been conversing, you've been quite helpful answering questions, I appreciate that. Just, just based on some comments I heard from the public, I'm glad to hear this is all geared towards educational, I just want you to, I guess, just restate that this will not be used for like summer concert series or things of that nature with performances at night.
No, it's-
This is all during the day, educational purposes.
This is all to enhance our education programs.
Okay, so there won't be any summer series? You save that for Brookdale Park and the other-
That's for Brookdale Park, Eagle Rock Reservation, Verona Park.
Okay. All right, that, that's, I just wanted a full clarification for the public.
We have, we have 33 other sites that are more suitable for concerts.
Okay. I just wanted a clarification. And the zoo hours are now till-
The summertime is from, don't quote me, I think it's 10 to 4:30, and then in the wintertime, I think it's 9:30 to 3:30.
Okay.
I may be off by a half an hour in either direction.
Okay, so as far as noise at nighttime with the amphitheater, it shouldn't affect any of our residents along-
No, there shouldn't be any noise from there.
Okay.
There are some night events, there's night moves, we do have some, the holiday lights in the evening, so there are some evening events, but there wouldn't be anything happening on that amphitheater stage at that time.
Okay, and I appreciate the communication with our, our police department. It is important because there's a lot of coordination that does need to go on. And what was the date for the parking garage to be open?
That's going to open, it'll be, the pieces will be completed by, I believe, October. Then they have to put in the fire suppression and lights, so we're looking sometime in January.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. Those are all my questions, Councilman.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
I do, I-
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Anthony, for giving us a detailed report and update. I just had a couple of questions with respect to the master plan. I, I know that I did see that there was a request for public input. How many times was that available to the public while creating the master plan? I saw one advertisement in February.
I believe there were, there was one public meeting, and then there were at least four meetings with various stakeholders with the zoo that are connected with the zoo.
Okay, and, and when they're creating this master plan to include all the, the new updates that the zoo has had, in that master plan, is there an anticipation of the extent of development that is foreseeable now and in the future for the zoo?
That's the- That's the role of a master plan.
No, I know, but is there, is that a conversation that was had perhaps when there were stakeholders at the last meeting to update everyone on the master plan?
Well, no, the last meeting that Mr. Gross attended was strictly on the amphitheater.
Okay.
That was, during that meeting, the county executive mentioned that the master plan would be completed by the end of this year. When we had the sessions to talk about the master plan, since that's what the master plan is about, there were some wish list items and some other items that might occur in the future, and those are included in, those would be included in the plan.
And those wish list items that were mentioned and obviously, you know, just discussed, are they within the confines of the zoo footprint?
I wasn't involved in that entire process, so I don't want to answer that. I can find that out for you.
Okay, and also, the number of residents, West Orange Township residents that are members of the zoo, do you have that?
I believe that's about eight hundred residents.
Okay. And obviously, the reason I'm asking is that I appreciate all of the other stakeholders in Essex County, right, because this affects us all. And I did have some time to speak with, oh my God, Mr. Olajio. And he did communicate some information with me with respect to the development that has happened at the zoo, when it has happened. There have been replacements of trees that have been cut down.
Right.
So on South Orange Road, is that where they did that crossover?
Right, so when we modernized the South Orange Avenue S-curves, we removed about three hundred and fifty trees, and we planted about six thousand.
Okay, and those are, I mean, obviously, they're native trees to here. In the area where Cherry Lane is, there is an area that floods. Were there trees removed from that area, or is that a naturally occurring event?
So I'm going to explain to you in the best of my ability how our county engineer explained it to us.
Okay.
The area that you're talking about is connected to the reservoir. The reservoir is a natural flood basin. So as the reservoir fills, or as it rains, the rainwater will go into the reservoir. When the reservoir is full, it will spill over down river. Another outlet that the reservoir has is that area that floods. And that is a natural, that is a man-made detention basin.
Okay.
So that as the reservoir fills, any water that doesn't go over that section downstream will find its way into that quote-unquote flooding area. As the reservoir level drops, that water will recede.
Okay, that I have noticed. And with respect to the parking garages, if you can just explain, because I know that there was some issues that occurred with one of the walls partially collapsing, can you talk about that?
It wasn't the wall that collapsed. The parking deck comes in precast pieces of concrete that, for lack of a better term, are put together like a puzzle. One of the decks, which would be what a car would park on, and again, I'm not involved in that entire process, so I'm not going to tell you the reason why it happened, but one of those decks, because I don't know the reason, one of the decks came loose from the wall and fell down to the decks below. That happened at a time when there was no one on site, there was no workers on site. Obviously, this site is off limits to the public. When that happened, we also closed a section of the walkway around the reservoir just to be proactive and make the area safe as possible. To my knowledge, well, the reservoir walkway was reopened yesterday, and they are ready to begin, ready to resume work on the parking garage next week.
Okay, and then this will be my last question. With respect to, I'm happy to hear that the grizzly bear exhibit is off the table. I couldn't imagine a grizzly bear being contained in such a small area. However large that area would have been, it's still small compared to its natural habitat, and that was concerning. For that exhibit, was there green acre funding applied for?
For the grizzly bear?
For the grizzly bear exhibit? Had that already been, okay.
The, we were, based on the green acres guidelines, we were required to submit projects by a certain date. The grizzly bear exhibit was included in that application, and our intention is that when the green acres awards come out, if the state does provide money for that project, we would go back to green acres through a process that they call J-Boc, and we would ask them to reprogram that money for us to another project. Which we've done in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. Don't have any questions, but I do thank you for inviting Anthony. Thank you for the updates. I look forward to hearing the master plan at the planning board level and any of these updates that you're talking about as courtesy hearing for the planning board. So I look forward to all of this information coming before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, Councilwoman McCartney, Council, I'm sorry, Councilman Kukrovjak, I apologize.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Puglisi, for coming to speak before us this evening. I believe that I attended that one public master plan hearing, and this is going back quite a ways. I recall that the consultants were talking about a number of potential improvements on the property, including some work sort of on the southern end of the property. You mentioned multiple projects here and sort of gave us a status update. Are there any other improvements or changes, major changes, that the consultants have come up with, either discussed at that one public meeting or subsequent, that also will be involving the property that you haven't mentioned tonight?
So my involvement with the master plan was at that meeting. So I can only relate to you what I remember from that meeting. I remember there were, obviously, there were various locations for the parking deck, which the county executive flatly said that he was not going to take any reservation space, because they had plotted various locations around there, and he said that, no, and that's why the need for a deck was identified. And the reason that the deck was being built in the location that it is now is that that deck is entirely on zoo property, it doesn't expand out into the reservation. And that area was already being used as the maintenance yard for the zoo, so it was developed in a sense. It wasn't really open space. You know, trucks parked there, materials were stored there, so that seemed like the most viable location for that. Again, just, we're trying to remember what happened at that meeting. I know there was an idea for a campground, there was probably an idea for some other circulation improvements inside the zoo. Again, I really haven't been involved with the process since then, so I'm sure it's changed. And if I can find, when I get to the office tomorrow, I'll see if I can get some additional information about just where it's heading.
Okay.
Like I said, the county executive said it would be done by the end of the year, and usually when he gives those directives, they're met.
Yeah, there was a discussion about this family campground sort of on the southeast portion of, maybe not the zoo property, but maybe on the reservation. But are you saying that that, has there been a decision made about that at this point?
Like I said, I'm not involved in that process, so I don't want to speak on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Puglisi, I know you have to run, but I just have two questions. I know you're going to work on the traffic study that I like, the old, the previous one and the new one, to get an idea of the traffic flow. And I apologize, Councilwoman Matu Pram, I know she asked about trees, but is there any possible way we can get an inventory of how many new trees, and how many trees were removed, and how many new trees in the zoo complex, just to what Councilwoman Matu Pram had asked? If we can get that?
Just within the zoo grounds?
Yes. And I thank you for coming and being prepared for this. I'm sure the residents know how, and we'll make sure they know how to reach you, and of course, we'll see you at our September meeting, but thank you very much.
If they don't know how to reach me, my email address is apuglisi, that's A-P-U-G-L-I-S-I, at admin dot EssexCountyNJ dot org.
Thank you, Mr. Puglisi.
Thank you for taking me first, and I apologize for having to leave a little bit early today.
We understand. Thank you, Mr. Puglisi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to now open the floor to public comment. If anybody would like, yes, Mr. Grossman. Five minutes, Mr. Grossman.
I'm here tonight because?
Can you please state your name and address?
Yes, Harvey Grossman, I'm the public advocate. I'm here tonight for several reasons, but the most immediate reason is the expansion of the zoo. You're all aware of the horrendous traffic problems and strain, traffic problems, which has brought strain on the West Orange Police Department, has resulted in horrendous accidents and traffic on a busy day at the zoo. I've seen the traffic back all the way up and down Northfield Avenue, back down to Main Street, cars going on neighborhood roads, in St. Cloud in particular. And so I thought that it would be a good idea to go to the other surrounding towns to apprise them of the problems they're having. And the response to my request that they publicly come out in favor of no further expansion on the zoo was overwhelming. I went to the council meeting in South Orange. They unanimously agreed that it was against the public interest for the zoo to eat into the reservation, and they wanted no further expansion. Subsequently, I determined that this was the sentiment in Maplewood, Milburn, and then I thought that, initially, I thought that this opposition to expansion of the zoo was confined to West Orange, confined to the surrounding towns. But then, when I went on social media, I found that this opposition extended all the way to Caldwell, which to me was striking. Now, when Mr. Puglisi, in effect, with respect to traffic, is saying that this parking zoo addresses the traffic problems, now think about this for a second. The county creates a horrendous traffic problem here in West Orange, and then they say, we're going to do you a favor, and we're going to solve it, we're going to put up a parking deck. Well, let me tell you what happened at the town council, at the planning board, when they made this presentation, a courtesy presentation. The, their plan as originally presented called for the storing of tools, supplies, which included various types of hydrocarbons and things of that nature, which were extremely flammable. The planning board directed the representatives in the county to the report of the West Orange Fire Department. The West Orange Fire Department, in effect, said that this parking deck was, in effect, a ticking time bomb. I called their attention through the report of the West Orange Fire Department, and I asked them if they would be willing to follow the recommendations of the fire department. Their response was, we're going to comply with whatever, you know, the appropriate standards are. They, in effect, ignored the West Orange Fire Department's recommendation, which was very concerned about the storage of flammable materials on the first floor. In effect, what they were creating was really a bomb, because if there's a fire or a fire hazard on the first floor, goes all the way up, and, you know, this obviously couldn't be tolerated. The planning board did as much as they could do, which was to set forth some recommendations, and I recommended they attach to their recommendations a copy of the West Orange Fire Department. Now, I mention this because throughout every step of the way, I just don't see where the county is responding to our fire department's recommendations. You know, they address the traffic problems.
Your time is up.
Well, somebody give me the other? No, Mr. Grossman, you get your five minutes, sir, and we appreciate your input.
Well, are you not interested in what I have done in other towns? Because I've gone there. They are unanimously against it. Now, the time has come now for you to act.
Jerry.
The governor should be contacted. I've received calls from Governor Pody.
Respectfully, Mr. Grossman, your time is up. We take your sentiment very seriously. We do, and we thank you for your input, sir, we do.
Well, I want to remind you that I represent the public interest. I represent the sentiment of the community. If you don't want to hear it, fine.
That's not we don't want to hear it, Mr. Grossman. You got your time, and we appreciate your input. We want to hear from the other members of the public, sir. Thank you. Mr. Grossman, Mr. Grossman, this is not, you know, please give it, because there are other people that want to talk. Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Is there anybody else, is there anybody else in the township that wants to speak?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have two issues I want to discuss.
Can you state your name and address?
Oh, sorry, Elizabeth Redwine, 10 Cobain Terrace. So I really appreciated that overview about the zoo, and I am grateful to the questions. I have a lot of concerns, and I just want to remind people that eight thousand six hundred and thirty-eight people have signed a change.org petition against zoo expansion, which you can, I just Googled it to find it. So, and I was one of those signatures. I heard talk about a master plan, I heard talk about a wish list, I heard talk about a family campground. As someone who lives near the zoo and walks in the woods, the open woods behind the zoo almost every day, it really concerns me that there are all these plans to expand the zoo footprint. Now, it's already been expanded ten acres recently, now another acre. And the speaker from the county executive office mentioned that the zoo is only open from nine-thirty to four-thirty. What you realize if you walk your dog early in the morning, as I do, is that construction starts very early, and it's incredibly loud. And that construction is constant, it's never-ending. And you know what? The zoo as it is now is great, it's fine, we're done. That's, it's enough, I think, for our neighborhood. And the construction is so loud for me, and I'm a human, and, you know, I have four loud kids, so like my hearing, it's so loud for me. It's louder than the loudest day in my house, and for my dog, it's incredibly loud. So I can't imagine how loud that construction early in the morning must be for all of those animals. And I don't even walk close to the zoo, because it's so incredibly loud before the zoo even opens. But it really concerns me to hear about all these ideas thrown around for further development of the zoo, and I really don't think it's in the best interest of our neighborhoods. And really important, too, that that expansion will build into open forest, which is so rare and so important. So when the county executive's office talks about open space, I think there's a disconnect between what many neighbors see as open space and what the office sees as open space. I don't see it as open space if it's a facility you have to pay or be a member to get into, where there's often not enough open space for the animals and for the children who visit. So, and I actually think the current amphitheater is fine. I've attended a lot of events at the current amphitheater. It's fine, you know, I mean, to me, it seems sufficient. So those are my concerns. And then, you know, I respectfully have to say, I was also very concerned about a letter that our mayor wrote in February in support of zoo expansion, and I reviewed some of the town council meetings around that time, and I saw no evidence for any checking with the public or the town council. So I just respectfully request that the mayor not support the expansion of a zoo without checking with the town council and public comment, because I know that many of us would have liked to have our voices heard on that. I did have one other issue I just want to really quickly mention, and forgive me, I'm going to read this off my phone, because it's super complicated, and I've read a bunch of articles about it today. So I am concerned about this use of ring doorbells to create a platform for the police to surveil activity without connection. activity without connection to a specific report of a crime. What it means is that the police can monitor posted videos and try to identify behavior that they think is suspicious, and then go out and look for the suspect when there has been no crime reported and nothing alleged. So it's really different from an individual calling the police and reporting a crime and saying to the police that they have a video that shows the perpetrator. In that case, the police are looking to follow up on a particular report, you know, which many of us have done if there's, you know, I don't know, some issue in our neighborhood. In that, in that case, the police would question a specific person during the reporting. This is different. This is not like West Orange having a police person on the beat to discourage crime. This would be our community participating in a platform that really does, and I've read many articles about this, proliferate bias while also implicitly endorsing Amazon and their products. So I believe that as a town, we should not be doing either of those things, and that we should not participate in that program. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Redwine. Yes, ma'am.
Kabir Myers, Marion Drive, West Orange resident. In the interest of time, I know that I'm allotted a maximum of five minutes, so let me just quickly mention the affordable housing resol that I know is being reserved for executive session. I would like to hear some more about that, if possible. It piqued my interest because I'm a keen advocate of affordable housing, and I don't think that the town is doing enough to preserve affordable housing and prevent the eviction of low-income tenants residing in West Orange, especially the elderly. It's been brought to my attention that it's a huge issue, elderly people in West Orange facing eviction. They've paid their dues. They deserve to reside in affordable housing. Now, on that note, I'd like to get to the main issue of why I'm speaking before the esteemed town council. It was just spoken about by Ms., Ms. Elizabeth, Ms. Redwine. And I wrote up a statement, again, in the interest of time, I wanted to get out my thoughts as expeditiously as possible. I am asking that the council please deny or at least table what's been labeled as Resolution K on the public agenda, which pertains to the MOU between the West Orange PD and Ring, because I believe that more research must be done and more infrastructure must be built to ensure adequate oversight and transparency of this partnership. One, will the prospective data sharing amount to a Fourth Amendment search without a warrant? Two, will the partnership require a quid pro quo data sharing between the West Orange PD and Ring and Amazon? Will Ring have access to 911 data for its marketing purposes? Who does the data sharing request to resident users? Is it the West Orange PD or is it Ring? Who will train the police on how to properly interpret and use the information so as not to encroach upon people's civil liberties and prevent the targeting of nonpersons of interest? Will public input be incorporated into this training of the West Orange Police Department prior to its usage? Now, while some police departments have indeed partnered with Ring and Amazon, many, if not most, have opted not to do so out of concern for protecting the privacy rights and civil liberties of their constituents. I ask that the town council follow suit and not partner with this corporation, and not partner with this corporation. There are multiple ways that the crime prevention goals of our West Orange Police Department can be accomplished, including, one, creating a private list of local homeowners who own Ring and similar devices and who are willing to share their video with the West Orange PD for investigation purposes. How about subscribing to Ring's Neighbors app, which is free? I believe this partnership will not only create unwanted government surveillance, but will also create corporate surveillance, where the data collected by Amazon and company will be used for marketing purposes and/or sold to other corporations, thus monetizing our police department. This sort of corporate surveillance will no doubt leave West Orange residents open to unwanted solicitations and cold calls, calls, cold calls, from a corporation whose main intent is to increase profit. The broad-sweeping surveillance this will create will doubtlessly chill the civil liberties of our residents and visitors due to self-censoring and the fear created by being watched by potential political adversaries. Non-user neighbors will be non-consensually brought into the fold by being tracked by this camera footage that may or may not be sent to the police. The government surveillance created by this partnership may result in the meeting out of punishments that are inequitable to the actions surveilled and have the unintended consequence of resistance and resentment towards our West Orange Police Department and one's fellow neighbors due to the suspicion which such high-level surveillance implies. And finally, this partnership may lead us down a slippery slope to all sorts of governmental intrusions and civil liberties and civil rights violations. Once again, I ask that the city council table, at least, I'm sorry, that the city council deny this resolution or at the very least table it for more investigation and research. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Shoma Sinha, S-O-M-A, last name is Sinha, S-I-N-H-A, SICHEL.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about the Ring technology, but I think, Ms. Myers, you did such a great job. I cannot follow that up. I'm just going to summarize what you said, and everybody is talking about the technology, how fantastic this technology is and how, how good it's going to make our lives. But I'm looking at social media, I'm reading all kinds of stuff, and the objection that people have is not against the technology per se. It's about the outcome of the technology, which has been shown to be racially biased and negative in many other different ways, and it is the social outcome that we need to talk about. We need to move beyond talking about how, how beautiful this technology is and think about the social impact of this technology. We have many different kinds of technology in our lives now. Think about the day when you got the smartphone, and you thought, "Oh, my life has changed. I can watch a movie when I'm on the subway." But now we are wondering about our kids, that they're spending 24 hours on their smartphones when they're supposed to sleep or when they're supposed to be doing their homework. So these are the social outcomes that I'm talking about, and we need to move our conversation beyond technology and get into social outcomes. The second thing I wanted to talk about is coming back to the zoo expansion. I heard the gentleman talk about how educational this is going to be, how our kids are going to be able to get close to the animals and interact with them. If you have the ability to, please go back to National Geographic a few months ago, I believe. It wasn't too many months out. There was an exhaustive article about how distressing it is for animals when they have to interact with humans. When kids go up to a dolphin exhibit, which we think is so fantastic, how distressing it is for those dolphins, how unnatural it is for them to come up to humans and take food from them, how unnatural it is to act in ways which we think is so much fun and enjoyable. It talked about walrus exhibits, where, you know, they are out there, they're not even close to the humans, but just having to perform for humans is not natural for them. So we are talking a lot about how the zoo, this amphitheater, and what is being planned for the amphitheater, how it's going to impact humans. Let's talk about how it's going to impact the animals as well, because the zoo is where the animals live, and this will have a huge impact on the animals. We are not teaching our children the right thing. If we are telling them that you can go there, you can interact with animals, just like we used to do 50 years ago, the world has changed. Let's keep up with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Charlotte Westcott. I live at 346 St. Cloud Avenue. And the first thing I want to say is there is a distinct possibility that we will have 70 new rental units at 555 Northfield Avenue, which is right across the street from the entrance to the zoo. So there will be more traffic on an already very heavily-traffic Northfield Avenue. On top of that, there may very well be a preschool. So there will be a lot more traffic. This is not a done deal. There is the next zoning board meeting is actually happening on Thursday. Be there. I live on St. Cloud Avenue. I've lived there for 17 years, and I, I know the traffic has increased tremendously on Northfield Avenue. To try to make a left-hand turn off of St. Cloud onto Northfield, you can take your life in your hands. It really gets very, very serious. So that's the first thing I wanted to bring to your attention. Also, it's so costly. Oh, my God. I'm a very frugal person, and it's shocking that all this money has already been allocated to the architectural firm. $600,000. Boom, done. There was no discussion at the, at the meeting, the open space meeting. I was there earlier in July, and it came up, and it was passed, and there was no discussion. $600,000 of our tax money, and not only our tax money. I mean, think about the potholes that you've driven over and you've killed your tires. Think about the people in Newark who are dealing with lead in their pipes. There is such a better way to use those funds than to build what is unnecessary. Do we really need a bigger zoo to bring in people from out of Essex County to entertain them? I don't get it. And the third, the third thing I want to, it's very disturbing to me that Essex County makes millions of dollars in fees for the immigration detention center in Elizabeth. And it disturbs me greatly to think that those dollars are brought into our bank account. It's blood money, as far as I'm concerned, the shameful treatment of immigrants on our soil in our county. And if that money that we have realized, "Oh, what a windfall. Hmm, let's go build a zoo," it makes no sense to me. It's really, it's kind of appalling. And I really, really hope, I mean, I love the zoo. Everybody loves a zoo, but enough is enough. And I really, really hope that this is it. Other communities are saying, "No, hold on. This is West Orange. It's our backyard. It's our front yard. It's ours." I hope that you will have the gumption and the guts to say, "Look, enough. No more." That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Kramer, West Orange resident and Republican nominee for Essex County Freeholder. I'd like to speak about the zoo, and I'd like to start with a question or perhaps clarification of what was said by the esteemed representative of the county executive. He may be technically correct that the revenues from the zoo may, from a strict accounting point of view, cover the operational budget of the zoo, but that does not mean that the county doesn't have to put, and other government entities don't have to put money in. The revenues clearly would not cover the operational, capital, bonding, and ancillary expenses such as parking and sheriff's security related to the zoo. So he may have been technically correct, but there's still a lot of money that has to come from taxpayer sources to go into the zoo. I actually want to give the freeholders and the county executive credit for historically saving the zoo and improving the zoo. It has become an asset for West Orange and has become something that we can all be proud of. However, there's a point at which bigger and more grandiose doesn't necessarily mean better. And I think we've more than reached that point. Putting resources into the zoo from the public sector that could be used to better purposes or even, God forbid, tax relief would be a smarter choice. There are also numerous environmental and traffic concerns related to the expansion of the zoo. So in deference to our county officials, the Board of Chosen Freeholders and County Executive DeFrancesio, perhaps it's time to step back, enjoy the zoo, and not make it, cease the need to make it a bigger and more grandiose place. And in that regard, I respectfully ask our council members to support the resolution and ask that the county not expand the zoo. Thank you for hearing me out.
Yes, sir.
Mark Rosenberg in Fernwood Circle. I just wanted to go back to what was said about Rock Spring. We, our property, actually, we live right behind Rock Spring, see all the action, very happy to see what's going on there. Would like to know if we could get more of the metrics for what exactly, is it a good turnout? Are we hitting our marks? Are we not? Are we above average, below average? And how we look on a monthly basis? It would be nice to get that report issued on social media, just to kind of give everybody some insight into what's, what's come out. I understand there's a financial report that's going out. I don't know if that can be public record, but it'd be nice to share that information. The second is green acres. We talked about green acres and the possibility of funding green acres, also the master plan and planning for green acres funding. I stated a couple of meetings ago that that process could take up to two years, and the time is now. It would be good to understand what's being done to date, what the plan is, what are our target dates, and are we, in fact, going to hit those targets? It was also told that we were short in our funding by, I think it was 25 cents per person. Have we hit that mark? Are we hitting it? Are we still under? And are we even eligible for green acres on the Rock Spring property? And the last part, just master plan. Obviously, a lot has been said tonight about parking, traffic studies, the redevelopment on Northfield Ave. With the proposed redevelopment on the lower half of Rock Spring, that could bring an additional couple hundred units on that, on that land as well, increasing the amount of cars and traffic to the, to the community. What's being done as a master plan, as an overall design charrette for the community and community involvement? It'd be good to understand what's being done there, either hiring a master planner for the entire section of the property all along Northfield, but to really understand the big picture and not just focusing on, on the 135 acres as it stands. And then lastly, I understand on the agenda tonight is, is looking to possibly extend Mr. Kronheim's activity on Rock Spring, and there's a, under Schedule A, it lists his potential involvement as reviewing the possible expansion all of or part of Rock Spring. Found that segment to be quite interesting, because at no time did we say we were going to redevelop the entire section of Rock Spring. But also just looking at Kronheim's history and his, where he's, his background is, whether or not he is, in fact, the person who should be making those decisions on a master plan scale and size. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, in the back, in the very back? Yes. No, 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 you, sir.
My name is David Yenior. I'm the co-chair of the Gateway Group of the Sierra Club. And residents of West Orange approached us and we have put together a resolution about the zoo in opposition. I'll pass out copies. This was adopted by the chapter, which is, represents the whole state. The Gateway Group represents about fifteen hundred residents in Essex County. The Sierra Club represents about twenty thousand. And we're just like appalled really at the audacity of the county executive trying to push through this expenditure, first as it was said, six hundred thousand dollars, just to create a design. And he does these things without any public comment. You know, he runs that open space committee. That's just perfunctory. He wants it, it happens. All these people on that, on that open space committee, they all work for the county or they have, or they have relatives that work for the county. This whole thing is, I mean, up here, the South Mountain Reservation, when I first moved here from Michigan, it was one of the things that I really loved about this area. And I mean, this guy has turned it into Disneyland. It's Honky Tonk. That, that, that big restaurant. The deals that are being made. The employees, who's getting money for contracts? I mean, the whole thing is corrupt. I mean, we really need to get like some sort of outside agency like the Attorney General that we have here in New Jersey to look at, look into this. So I was glad to hear that the Bear exhibit is nixed. Funny that we only just found that out tonight. Everything is done very secretively. So this resolution, we would ask you to consider when you do your own resolution, I hope you do. You know, you represent the people of West Orange, but also, you know, this whole thing affects everyone. Anybody who goes up Northfield Avenue on a Saturday or a Sunday in particular, it's a nightmare in terms of traffic. And then, so we have one other issue and that is there's this parcel of land, as was mentioned by one of the councilmen, up on Ridge Road. You said that was going to be on the agenda to be discussed soon. So we are recommending that you do whatever you can to acquire that twelve acres as a buffer to any further development. It's a matter of ecology. It's a matter of flooding. I mean, all those beautiful trees that are, I mean, I was here before when the McClellan estate was leveled. The former General McClellan, governor of New Jersey, and that was his, that was a preserve, preserve up there, old growth. And West Orange approved it. So, so I mean, Seton Hall has a lot of clout. So here's this, here's the resolution with regard to the twelve acres and I hope you are able to do the right thing. Do you have any questions?
Can you give me your last name again?
Okay, Y E N N I O R. I used to teach at West Orange High School, right on Northfield Avenue.
Thank you.
My son lives on Northfield Avenue with his family and I've always felt, I have other family members locally and I've always felt very part of West Orange. And I really appreciate the citizens here that are speaking, speaking up so eloquently. So I know the lady behind me...
Your time is up.
Thank you, sir.
The lady behind me wants to speak next.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I live at 134 Walker Road. I'm just up here to sort of lend my voice to what my fellow neighbors have said much more eloquently than I probably will here today in opposition to the expansion of the zoo. I've lived here about ten years and in that time I've seen the big cat country come to the zoo. I've seen the ten acres being taken for this African safari and now we hear just one more acre for this. And then without a master plan, what's next? One more acre here, five more acres there. And pretty soon we have lost one of the biggest assets to our community, which is our open space. And about a year and a half ago, I was driving down Wyoming with my two children in the car and I fatally struck a deer. I was driving thirty-five miles an hour. I'm very, I drive like an uptight lady. I was minding the speed limit and I was with my children and it was very traumatic for them. And I can only imagine that as we strip away more and more of these animals' natural habitat, that the accidents will increase in frequency and potentially in the next body on the middle of the road is a human one. I had to hobble out of the car. The deer was in the middle of the road and two gentlemen helped me remove it so that it wouldn't cause further accidents. And we had to watch as another car came through and strike it across the neck. It was very traumatizing and I just want to make sure that we really consider the environmental impact. It takes about ten to thirty-five years for a tree to mature. So I keep hearing, oh, we're replacing the trees. But in what time are those trees viable? How many will survive? Are they providing an accurate food source for the animals that are, that are living there, the proper shelter? Takes decades to, to create that. So I'm, I think that the replacement of trees, of healthy trees that we're cutting down to say that we're replacing them, that's, that's not good enough. It's not adequate. And I just really want to make sure that the council here advocates for the best interest of West Orange. I think Essex County has their hands full considering that Newark's water is poison and our ICE facilities are a national embarrassment. I would think that they would be more concerned with that than making another entertainment, even though they say it's educational. Let's get real, it's really about money, profit, and making a pretty little attractive site to fatten pockets. I mean, that's really what it is. So anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
West Orange's master plan, approved by the Township Council, contains the open space and recreation plan. The goals of the open space plan include the following. Preserve open spaces to maintain and enhance community character, quality of life, and natural and cultural resources. Identify and protect at-risk natural resources such as core forests and steep slopes from disturbance and future development. Identify and work to preserve and create habitat for threatened and endangered species. The Ridge Road property bordering on the sharp curve near the top of Mount Pleasant Avenue fits the profile of the type of property that those who wrote and approved the plan had in mind. In West Orange now, there is precious little property that can potentially be preserved as open space. This is one of the few remaining properties that actually covers a fair amount of acreage. The site is thickly forested and that forest provides habitat and refuge for many species, including the endangered Indiana bat, as well as birds migrating up and down the eastern flyway. The hundreds of trees on the site produce huge volumes of oxygen and consume huge volumes of carbon dioxide, thus helping to combat climate change. The site also has a steep slope. The thick forest that covers the slope soaks up millions of gallons of water that would otherwise run down Mount Pleasant Avenue, creating more hazardous conditions for drivers on an already hazardous section of roadway. The tree roots also prevent soil erosion. If the property were to be developed, costly engineering would have to be implemented to do the work that the forest is doing now, free of charge. The Open Space Fund now contains a large percentage of the money needed to purchase the property at its current asking price. As a member of the Open Space Commission who is deeply concerned about the loss of habitat, open space, and wild places, and the environmental damage that results from that loss, I have to ask, are the goals and ideals of the West Orange Open Space Plan just words on a page or are they operating principles by which we make decisions? What does it say about us as a community if we have the opportunity to purchase such a property and the means with which to purchase it and we choose not to do so? Combating climate change, mitigating flood hazards and soil erosion, improving air quality, these are tasks to be done and responsibilities to be held, not only by the global community on a global level or by the federal government on a national level, those are surely necessary, but also in thousands of communities on a local level. All of us, individuals and communities, have a role to play and a responsibility to carry. To live and survive, we have to use nature, but we have a choice. We can choose to use it well or we can choose to use it poorly. I ask you to please choose to use this property well. Let us use it to absorb water to prevent runoff. Let us use it to prevent soil erosion. Let us use it to provide oxygen. Let us use it to combat climate change. Let us use it to provide habitat for migrating birds whose populations are declining due to habitat loss, among other reasons. Contemporary writer Wendell Berry has written, quote, "The care of the earth is our most ancient and most worthy and, after all, our most pleasing responsibility. To cherish what remains of it and to foster its renewal is our only legitimate hope," unquote. We here, living in this moment, in this place, are participants in this human responsibility of caring for the earth. With respect and trust, I ask you to please purchase this property and preserve it as open space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosemary Morelli Ralph Road. If I can get through these scribbles tonight, we'll be out of here soon. As a self-appointed spokesperson for the senior citizens and disabled people in the township, I want to extend my thanks, deep, deep thanks, to our first responders, the police and the fire department for the outstanding job that they did on 280. I just, they did, they really did. We're very lucky to have them, especially the seniors. And I just learned yesterday that one car, that gray car, a very dear friend of mine was in that car. She actually went from the front seat to the back seat and she, fortunately, nothing's broken, but she's very traumatized. But again, seniors are grateful. Chief, got you guys, you have our back. We're very, very grateful for that. Okay, let's see. I want to talk about transparency as it applies to the council meetings on TV and the board and the council meetings on TV. Now, the time period for human gestation is nine months. We're into the sixth month of the missing park, so maybe we'll get the park before somebody Problem with lack of transparency is people are learning what is happening or not happening by verbalizing. When I go to the shop, right, for a loaf of bread, I stay there three hours. Question is, what's happening down there? What are they doing now? So I have to explain it. Understand, there are so many people out there who did not know that we're getting an eight-point-five percent tax increase and they're also, they weren't aware of the fact that we now own Rock Spring. That's a lack of transparency. They got a letter, they didn't understand the letter, it looked like they had the tax increase, but why? No explanation. So something needs to be done. We just can't tolerate this. It's, it's not acceptable. It's a form of censorship. The word on the street is, well, it came at a good time when they bought, they bought a golf course, we're getting an eight-and-a-half percent tax increase, so nobody knows it. What are we having in this town? Censorship? Somebody else said this park was struck by lightning, so someone else said to me, it sounds like sabotage. The word out there is not good. And when the people in this town, the citizens of this township aren't kept abreast of what's going on, that's censorship. I'm sorry, in my opinion, that's what it is. It shouldn't be happening. Letter that went out really didn't explain what was happening. It just gave the tax payment for that, period. That also was very poorly done. You take seniors who live on social security, count every dime, budget their money in cash in different envelopes, getting hit with that tremendous increase. Not that it was going to change, but they should have known about it. It's a shock. How are we going to do this? How are we going to pay for this? I have a lot more, but I don't think I have the time. Let's see. That's about it. I'm wondering if, I know, Ms. Castellino, you mentioned something at the beginning of the meeting about this park. Oh, I know what, I have a suggestion. If you haven't been to the William Payne Technical High School in Newark, go there because they're on the leading edge of technology. I would be willing to bet the kids in that school would have made this park in a month and a half. So reach out to them. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morelli.
Hello, you all. Lots of tough problems being dropped on your shoulders. And I'm going to tell you about another one.
Can you state your name and address?
Sally Malanga Ridge Road.
Thank you.
The Patch picked up a lifesaving article from today's Washington Post. I don't know if you got it in your inboxes today. I got it this afternoon. It's an article with a map of the United States colored with bright red swatches and New Jersey has one of the brightest red stains. That's because New Jersey is one of the top three fastest heating states, double the average of the other forty-eight states in our nation. Our temperature is up over three-point-six degrees Fahrenheit since the turn of the century. That's double what is survivable. Essex County is, is heating up more than we can tolerate. We are changing the planet so that humans cannot survive here and it's happening quickly in our lifetimes here in New Jersey, in West Orange. This summer, we lost access to Lake Hopatcong and the Manasquan Reservoir due to toxic algae blooms. Our beaches are being washed away and we are experiencing one downpour after another. The Washington Post article connects the dots into what we must all face. Don't go by what you experienced today. It's the accumulated degradation over time, like a frog in slowly boiling water. It's the loss of trees, the burning of gas and oil, the production of factory farm animals that has caused it. We have caused it. What can we do in West Orange? Accept this reality, unite, and take action before another emergency occurs. unite, and take action before another emergency occurs. For example, it's great that you ended our contract with the previous energy aggregator, which supplied our town with fossil fuel and nuclear power. That's step one. We can be passive and preserve the forests that we have left as they keep us cool, and we don't have nearly enough in West Orange. Specifically, I am asking you to stop our forester, John Linson, from cutting down our massive street trees, which he is doing as of today. Our precious canopy coming down for curb repair. We must plant thousands of trees in town and nurture them to survive. What will you do if there's another Dust Bowl? You can't save your own family. We're in this together. We're all connected. We survive or die together as a species. And we take all the animals and plants with us. There's no West Orange Planet B. The mayor, during his budget negotiations, stated that he wanted money for climate change remediation. I'd like to ask you, what is his plan? What is your plan? As it relates to the zoo, that's $8 million. Money being spent for an entertainment complex that should be used, redirected to much more important matters, such as climate change remediation, which is now an emergency. As much as I like seeing the county's spokesperson, he's rather disingenuous. I have been to all the meetings regarding the zoo. I've been to meetings where they did not allow a vote until they, allow us to speak, until they took a vote. I was at meetings where there was two hours of public comment that was vehement in opposition to this spending from all towns. He claims that the amphitheaters for education. People stood up and said, "You don't educate 500 people at once. You educate students in small groups." The amphitheater has 150,000-gallon aquarium. He says it's not a SeaWorld aquarium. That's a gigantic aquarium. As someone spoke earlier, animals do not want to be dragged in front of people. Let's not be persuaded by their continuous cloaking of an entertainment complex with the words "education" and "conservation." They are not doing that. So I hope you will put some serious consideration to all these thoughts. People are coming here to speak to you with all sincerity and all concern, and I hope that you will take us to heart. Thank you.
Good evening, Gary Van Wick, Burnett Terrace. I was very disappointed to see that two things didn't make tonight's agenda. I was really hoping that the town council would put forward, for discussion, a resolution opposing development at the zoo, like our neighboring towns. And I also was really hoping to see us move forward as we have apparently promised to do before on the acquisition of the open space on Ridge Road. Neither of those made the agenda, and I find that very disappointing. I must endorse the comments of previous speakers here in the room tonight advocating on both those issues, as well as the very important issue of surveillance through the Ring Technology. I think most of the points have been very well covered here already. And also, I know, in the proposed resolution that was circulated to the council before the meeting. But I think I would just like to underscore a couple of contradictions that I think we need to be very careful about. Sally Melanga just mentioned one, that is, education versus entertainment. There is an education center at the zoo with four big classrooms. And I've checked out those classrooms when the schools are there. You know who's in those classrooms? Not kids. It's people that are employed by the zoo eating their lunch in there. So there are plenty of educational facilities that are not being used. There is also an existing amphitheater that is not really being adequately used at all. So this idea of education is really a kind of a ruse because X number of kids are coming in on those buses anyway. They're seeing animals, eating lollipops, and leaving happy anyway. We do not need an entertainment arena there to drag animals onstage, basically to make them perform for people. Another issue we need to look at is the way that parking and traffic are being considered. We have thousands and thousands of cars pouring in here on a busy zoo day. To give 300 more parking spots is not going to deal with thousands and thousands of cars. What the county representative said is completely false. 300 parking spots is not going to solve a traffic problem. Profit versus funding. Maybe I learned something tonight. I thought the zoo was a massive profit spinner, a bit like making money from keeping people in captivity. But it sounds like maybe it's not such a money spinner, and actually, it needs funding. Certainly, if it needs more funding from us, I'm even more in opposition to it because I don't think our money should be going there. The biggest underlying fundamental contradiction is between the concept of open space and development, or parks. Parks, baseball diamonds are, might be open space, but they're not nature preservation areas. They're basically for sports and entertainment. Open space and protecting the reservation is a sacred and a legal trust to keep that land in perpetuity for the people of New Jersey. It is not for the county executive to steal land from in order to build entertainment complexes that we have to then cater for in terms of traffic and space, cluttering up our space while taking away our open space. So I hope that the town council will take all these issues really to heart, get on board with the resolutions of our neighboring towns, and try to stop the encroachment of the nature reservation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lawrence Wavilas, Prospect Avenue here in West Orange. The advantage of going later in the evening is you get to hear all these great residents and members speak, and CR clubs here is phenomenal. The disadvantage, you find yourself taking frantic notes, and then what you came with ends up expanding. So Essex County, we cage immigrants, we cage animals. That's going to be the new motto, I think. It was good to hear Anthony Pagliosi speak this evening. I kind of refer to myself as the Sarah Sanders of Essex County, selling the county and all the good things it has, even though a lot of it is so awful. Some of the facts that he stated, such as the numbers at the zoo, 2,200 kids a day, 6,000 on Saturday, 6,000 on Sunday, and celebrating that, I just find it gross. I find it sickening to think that there's that many people flooding to the zoo. And I don't know if that's something we should be celebrating. We're a community, we're a small community of 47,000 people or so. We're a suburb, we're not Orlando or San Diego. So it was, I was at the meeting Mr. Kovaec was referring to, to the one public meeting that the county held with regards to the zoo. And Mr. Pagliosi stood right here, and he just said that that the county executive stated that they wouldn't be encroaching on any more open space. And here, now they're going to take that acre. And it will start as an acre, but $8 million, you can do a lot on that property. And that old amphitheater they have, I mean, 150,000-gallon tank. If you drive down the Turnpike and you see any of these fuel, these huge fuel tanks that hold, that say Hess on them, or I don't know if that exists anymore, that's 100, those are 150,000 gallons. That's a lot of water. And then additionally, two extra 40,000-gallon tanks, holding tanks, no less. Kind of like a holding pen, I think, for immigrants. But to keep these animals so they can be prepped for their show. And it is theatrics. And that's not what we need here. That's not education. I live near the zoo. I can hear the train whistle from my yard and was a member of the zoo for years when my kids were little. I get to experience the traffic problems almost daily as I either commute to Livingston, where I work, or run errands along Northfield, the martial arts training center, the dry cleaners, or contend with that jug handle, the juggernaut, that people can't seem to figure out, especially the outer towners that are coming here. They try to take a left as they're heading west on Northfield to get onto Cherry Lane instead of going off to the right. The zoo touts itself on its education and rehabilitation work with animals. But you've seen the county's proposal for what they would like the amphitheater to include. And perhaps you've been to the education center as a part of a tour or a class. In case you haven't, I was there in, I believe it was May, with my preschool class. And I would suggest going. And as a 25-year veteran teacher, I would suggest skipping the school tour if you're a school teacher or planning on a visit to the zoo. I took some livestream video of the one window that was open as all these buses were pulled up and kids in their cute little T-shirts all matching to, so we know what school they belong to, are lined up and trying to figure out who's got tickets, who's going in, using these big wheelbarrows for lunches and backpacks. And then you go into the classroom, which are these overly air-conditioned rooms with big plastic chairs and little three- and four-year-olds sitting on these chairs. And there, a 19-year-old kid there trying to mumble through some lecture about animal skins and passing a snake skin and fur. And there's a table with some owl pellets. And it's not education. So I can't imagine what this amphitheater is going to be like. Rehabilitation of the animals. Again, you saw the proposal, strobe lights, stages. I've been in many hospitals, either visiting others or recovering myself from various ailments. Never were strobe lights, music system, and theatrical lighting or seating for 300, or now 500, needed. Please don't be sold on rehabilitation of poor little animals. Sell you an expanding zoo far beyond what it needs to be. I'm asking for you to shoot for the stars and be a leader by just saying, "No more zoo expansion. This isn't Disney. People don't move to the suburbs from cities so they can experience the very same traffic issues, congestion, noise, and pollution they just left."
Your time is up.
Resolution, not a revolution. It's easy to do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Mark, you'll be next, okay? Yes, sir.
I present, council members. My name's Ted LaStrange. I'm not a resident of West Orange. My address is 43 Prospect Hill Road, Cuddybackville. That's upstate New York.
Can you state your name again, please?
Ted LaStrange.
Can you spell the last name?
New York, your address again?
Yes, sir. 43 Prospect Hill Road, Cuddybackville, New York. I do have a printout with... Yeah, this is way off topic. It's not good news. So I entitled this "Genocide by Scalpel" because that's the title given by one of the investigators into forced organ harvesting in China. The Rob Dada research concludes China's hospitals transplant between 60,000 and 100,000 vital human body organs each year. The China's no real organization program. Here in the U.S., with the most sophisticated organ transplant system of the world, a patient will wait two to three years just for matching organ to become available. In China, the waiting time is measured in weeks. An organ transplant tourist to China, including one from West Orange, can arrange specific date for their operation. That effectively means that someone will be dispatched on their behalf on that date. It's a cultural taboo to donate one's organs after death in China. So what's the source of all these organs? Translation of these facts equates to tens of thousands of prisoners of conscience each year being killed for their organs. Most of these prisoners of conscience are Falun Gong practitioners, but also Tibetans, Uighurs, and house Christians. They are routinely blood tested and their organs examined while held in China's forced labor camps, detention centers, and black jails. I have a quote, "On June 13, 2016, the U.S. House of Representatives unanimously passed Resolution 343, which in its summary section, quote, 'condemns the practice of state-sanctioned forced organ harvesting in China.'" Let's quote. "The European Parliament has also passed similar resolutions. This has been happening now for about 20 years. There's still a deadly silence on this issue. And that's why I come before you, the elected and respected representatives of the community, to echo the heavy burden of this genocide as acknowledged by the House. China has total control of its own media and way beyond that. So it comes down to word of mouth to divulge what's happening. Many dedicated researchers gathered an enormous amount of data from current and archived hospital websites, local media reports, medical journals, telephone surveys, and other evidence for the over 1,000 hospitals in China that have performed these organ transplants. Some books are now being written and documentaries have been produced with more comprehensive information. So I brought along this package materials for your kind attention and a proclamation with the list."
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Good evening. Mark Meyerowitz, 19 Howell Drive. I just want to say that tonight there were some, I support law enforcement. And I've heard some derogatory remarks about our nation's policy towards illegal immigration. But I think our country is doing the correct thing and the county is doing the correct thing. We have to enforce our laws. And when people do things illegally, you know, that has to be taken into consideration. I also don't like the inference that a Ring surveillance device is inherently or going to be somehow racist because it can only be racist in the hands of a racist. And by saying it's going, by opposing this being used in West Orange, it's almost as if we're saying the citizens of West Orange are going to use it for racism and the police are going to use it for racism. And I don't think the police or the citizenry of West Orange are racist. So I would strike that notion, whether you approve this or not is one thing. But I would strike the notion of racism right out of it because I don't think, you know, a doorbell with a camera is inherently racist. About the educational amphitheater, I hate the idea of taking down trees and everything for this. And there must be another way around it. But I would like to see the county's educational plan. What are they actually going to do to educate the kids? You know, what's the program? What's the word, curriculum? Is that the best word? You know, what are they going to do? So let's see that. They might have legitimate plans that will educate because zoos and aquariums are probably the closest that many kids and adults will ever get to wildlife and nature. And it could be a good way to, I think it's a great way for zoo, you know, in general. I'm not talking about this project. But in general, zoos and aquariums are wonderful for educating kids and making them interested in the sea, in sea turtles, in birds, in everything, in primates. And they have to see it. And the place to start to see it is here, in the zoos, for a lot of people. There is another traffic issue. Everybody's been talking about traffic on Northfield. But when you come up, I know my wife drives- But when you come up, I know my wife drives on Pleasant Valley Way all the way to Springfield. She works in Springfield. And we live at the northern tip of West Orange, one house from Verona. So she drives the entire way on Pleasant Valley Way. And when you come up that, in that direction after work, and especially in December, when there are a lot of Christmas parties at McLunes and there's political events at McLunes and there's the Christmas lights at McLunes, or the Christmas lights in the zoo, it takes forever to go from the, you know, from when you went through West Orange, past the new boathouse, the light at the boathouse, and then up to McLunes. I mean, the traffic is backed up, I don't know how far it is. It must be miles. And it probably adds another 15, 20, 25 minutes to their commute. Now, when you work, go to work every morning at seven and you, you know, start work at 7:30 and you leave at 6:30, you want to get home. You really want to get home. And to sit in traffic in your own town is really a shame because, you know, government, government is supposed to make our lives better. And that includes the people who have to commute to work. And I don't think anybody's been taking into consideration the, you know, the Pleasant Valley Way direction. But that gets way backed up. And I don't think you need a fancy traffic plan. You probably need to put some police officers there directing traffic and making sure that the Pleasant Valley Way can go through, you know, at a, at a good clip before they're stopped again. So please, please keep that in consideration also. And once again, I support law enforcement. And, you know, we have to do everything we can to make sure that they are well taken care of and get all the support that they need. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council members. My name is Joyce Rudin, Woodland Avenue. I'm a proud former member of the Open Space Commission. And I'd like to speak to you about the Turtleback Zoo, which so many people have already spoken about tonight. This is a story of a continual bait and switch at the expense of West Orange. As we sit here, a county-proposed $16 million request for the grizzly exhibit at the Turtleback Zoo is on the desk of the New Jersey Green Acres Program. A decision will be made within a month. As it was mentioned, Mayor Puglisi supported this exhibit in a letter in February to the county executive. He said that the bear exhibit would be a great benefit to our residents. So here's the bait and switch. At a private meeting at the beginning of this month, the county executive called in five officials from Milburn, Maplewood, South Orange and West Orange, and he said that he would not be putting in the grizzly bear exhibit. As a matter of fact, I heard that he actually laughed when he said that. Instead, he would use Green Acres and County Open Space Fund to build a multi-dollar amphitheater. Tonight, Mr. Puglisi stated this publicly. So with the grizzly bear exhibit off the table, why didn't the county notify Green Acres and say that they won't be needing that $8 million anymore? It's pretty clear. Mr. Puglisi mentioned this tonight. They do what they've done in the past. They simply do a, what he called a J-Bot. Other people would call this a bait and switch. The money that the application went in for was for a grizzly bear exhibit. While this is abhorrent to most people in this community, the grizzly bear exhibit would have been within the boundaries of the reservation. This project that the county executive is replacing it with is a project that cuts directly into our reservation. As it was mentioned, there are now almost 9,000 individual signatures opposing this plan. Members of the public who came in opposition to the amphitheater project were not allowed to speak, yet the $600,000 contract design fee was given to a company which is a frequent contributor to the county executive's campaign. These are design plans that specifically said to build an entertainment center with gigantic pools and life support systems for the animals. This is what we in open space dollars paid for. We paid for that plan. And now there's a further switch, and this one pertains to language. The county executive and his representatives, who you heard tonight, are now backing off on the plan with the design that we have now paid for, for a SeaWorld exhibit. And now we're discussing the amphitheater as a quote-unquote "educational center." Make no mistake about it, this is a full-on entertainment venue. What we are paying for is at the expense of losing our precious reservation. Last week, Maplewood passed a resolution requesting more transparency and a suspension of plans to expand the zoo into the South Mountain Reservation. A Caldwell councilman did the same. Shouldn't West Orange be taking the lead in this? This is our backyard, as so many other people tonight have said. An amphitheater would have enormous noise, traffic and light impacts in our community. This is bad for us. The zoo was originally designed to be 15.5 acres. It was designed to be a quiet Hans Christian Andersen-inspired petting zoo. Enough is enough. As you have heard tonight, Mr. Puglisi verified that since 2003, the zoo has taken, gobbled up more than 10 acres. They have gobbled it up to use for carnival-like amusements like a zip line, a mini golf course, parking lots, and McLunes, which is a for-profit restaurant. That makes no sense to me whatsoever. We are all paying for this out of our county open space monies. And in truth, there is very little money spent on preserving real open space.
Your time is up?
May I have one more minute?
You may have a couple, make a few more statements, please.
The citizens who speak out tonight do so at a risk. It is not easy to get up here and speak before you. And even though the entire community is not here with us tonight, the citizens of this township and the county have already spoken. We have supported every Green Acres bond issue on every ballot that has ever been put up. We have opened, we have voted for open space with our tax dollars. Please don't take the bait and now approve an educational amphitheater. It is not in our best interests. Write a resolution and please stop the zoo from further encroaching into our reservation. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the township council? Yes, Mr. Fagan, our town historian.
Joseph Fagan, Public Information Officer. I'm sorry for saving my announcements for last, but I did not want to interrupt the continuity that many people were speaking on similar topics about. I just want to offer some additional information about firefighter holder. As was mentioned earlier, a meal train page was established by FMBA locals 28 and 28 on behalf of his family. Anyone wishing to donate to support his family can do so by going to the website that I have up here on the table here on the flyer. This page offers various ways to lend support to accommodate all those who have asked to help. However, the FMBA requests at this time that the family's privacy be respected and the community utilize this dedicated mechanism of the meal train rather than contact any family member directly. Some talk has been made about Rock Spring tonight. I want to announce that on August 29th, from 12:30 to 4:30, there's going to be a seminar held at Rock Spring. This seminar is to actually help fundraisers. If you ever, if your organization was ever thinking about doing a fundraiser and you wanted to do a golf tournament and didn't know about how to go about planning a golf tournament as a fundraiser, that's what this seminar is about. It's only $20 a person, which includes the cost of the seminar lunch and a tournament planning kit and some door prizes. And if anyone's interested, I have a brief history up here booklet I wrote, complete history of Rock Spring from its founding in 1926 through the current day. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the township council? Seeing none, I close public comment and I open the floor to my council colleagues.
We've had about, excuse me, two hours of quite eloquent, quite passionate, quite informed, quite opinionated comments, and I sincerely appreciate them. I just don't know how I'm going to be able to address all of the issues that were raised. So I'll just try to be, I'll just try to be brief. When I look at a couple of the issues that were raised today, and I guess perhaps all of them, to me, it's always a balancing act. You've got to balance the pros with the cons. What are the benefits? What are the costs? And in some of these cases, we as a township literally have no legally enforceable way to influence anything at the zoo. We have, I've been up here almost 10 years, and there's seldom a year or even six months that goes by that the issue of the traffic at the zoo and the surrounding area doesn't come up. And that just inconveniences a lot of people. And I've heard them come and speak at the zoning board and the various regulatory bodies on courtesy reviews because we have no say about a different, for all intents and purposes, sovereign entity that does not have to follow our zoning laws. And all of these comments tonight were really well-taken. But I just want to suggest that you continue to address it to the county and to the freeholders, the county freeholders. Because those are the people that you can influence as those constituents. But up here, even if we have a resolution, even if we pass a resolution, it has no effect. And it's just one of the issues that constantly is a burr to literally hundreds of people in our township. And it's just, it's something that we've never been able to address. And again, it's the balancing act of, you know, there's, according to the county, more than 900,000 people who like that zoo or like that property and come in, except everybody who comes in to see that has to come across our property, our West Orange township, in order to do that. So I'm very sympathetic to it. I just don't know what the answer is. On the Ring Resolution, the memorandum of understanding, the resolution authorizing it, I do have, I was surprised not to hear any discussion about what the, again, the balancing, the benefits of having this function in town does for not only preventing or solving crime, but for telling the bad guys they can't come to our township because they're likely to be on Ring video and we'll catch them. I hear the concerns about the potential threats to civil liberties and privacy. But I, again, I've been here 10 years and our police do not have any sort of reputation of not following the laws and not treating all residents equally and very successfully preventing crime and solving crime. And while I certainly agree that we would have to keep our eyes on this, I don't feel that the concerns at this point outweigh the benefits of having more resident involvement. This is all going to be driven by residents who put the video in the cloud for the police to see and for other residents to see as well. There was a question about affordable housing and to generally address that, and there's actually a resolution for an executive session tonight having to do with a mediation, a mediation that's been going on, councilman, maybe two years, that you and I have been involved in trying to address the legal issues having to do with affordable housing. And I can assure you that West Orange has not only done its fair share, it has done it in a very, a very honorable way, again, trying to balance the need to address the legal obligations to provide affordable housing with the fact that we don't have a whole lot of opportunities to provide this. But there's not much that we can talk about now, except to say that it's, the mediation involves trying to determine what our, the next round of our affordable housing obligation is and how we're going to, how we're going to meet that. There was a question about, some questions about Rock Spring. I don't see any problem with putting the financials up online. It's, all of you residents out there, you're hard owners of the Rock Spring facility, so I don't see any reason why you can't see that. If the township doesn't want to put it up, I can put it up. We've had this on the council today. Ms. Morelli, I agree with you, this issue, I did not realize until you said this, that we've been going on eight months now without having public access TV to the council meetings. Perhaps we need to get a fuller report on this, because I just didn't realize it was eight months without this. But thank you very much for talking about our continued need for transparency. And again, on a related issue with some of the issues raised at the zoo, the Open Space Committee is considering recommending to the council whether to acquire some open space property, again, over at, near the intersection of Prospect Avenue and Mount Pleasant Avenue. And I would appreciate the support. I think it's a really good idea. Again, many good comments. I'm just not going to be able to address them in detail, but thank you to everyone for coming out tonight.
Thank you, councilman. I'm going to make a comment. I'd just like to make a comment before I give it to the rest of my colleagues. It seems tonight, and I want to put people in a position where I'm saying is, I know everybody's going to make a comment about the resolution for the zoo. I know it. And everybody's going to go on 15, 20 minutes, and I'm like that. I'd like to ask my council colleagues at this time, are they in favor or not in favor of preparing the resolution to the county, making our point felt that whether we don't approve of additional expansion to the reservation, I mean, to the zoo in our reservation? I'd like to put that out there now instead of waiting to go around. And people can make their comments, but everybody here, it's nine o'clock, and when everybody makes their comments, it could be 10, 10:30. I'm only saying is, everybody's made a good point tonight about it. But I just want to make my point, Father, whatever we do do, I'd like the township council and the township to represent the residents in a respectful and not a threatening way. There is a way to make a comment. There is a way to get your point across, but there's a nice way of doing it and not a threatening way. a threatening way of doing it. And that's what I'm asking, that we're all here professionals, we're all great people, and we have wonderful residents in our town, but I'd like to put it before my council colleagues that how we should move forward. Can we, and Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd like to put it into a position where we can decide we're going to do a resolution that we can have legal work on and then vote on it at our, you know, our next meeting. Yes, Councilman?
Good thinking, Council President. And I think that's exactly what happened this evening. I think tonight was very respectful. I appreciate all the comments that were made. Majority is about the zoo. I do appreciate you bringing Anthony in to preface tonight's meeting, and I would want to see a resolution. What I appreciate what happened this evening, after all the comments that were made, the fact that Mr. Yonor from Sierra Club gave us this resolution, there have been many emails circulating with the Environmental Commission about South Mountain Conservancy also weighing in on a resolution, so I would take their comments. And with the Maplewood Resolution that was passed, what they're saying is that there is no expansion until the master plan. And what we just heard this evening is that the master plan probably won't come till the end of this year. So that's good news. That's good news, that even if it's not on this agenda, we have plenty of time to compile our own resolution, taking all of this information into effect, to put a resolution possibly by our next, by our next meeting, because we still have plenty of time if they're not going to prepare their master plan or not have it ready until the end of the year. So I would say yes, but I would like to see, this would definitely have to be amended because the grizzly bears is in there, and we heard that's off the table. We did hear money's being reallocated. So this resolution that we received this evening would have to be amended, but there are plenty of comments that have been received. Resident just said that it's difficult to come to speak at a council meeting. I think everyone was outstanding this evening presenting their comments, and I do appreciate that. But people call and email and send this information all the time, so you don't necessarily have to come to a council meeting to be heard, because we hear the 9,000 signatures. We've heard that. So I appreciate all the comments that we made this evening. And I agree actually with my colleague this evening, except for the comments that Joe just made, except for the one about we don't have a say. And I know I said this at the last meeting, the county has to come when they prepare their applications before the planning board for a courtesy review. Traffic is an issue, and I'm hoping the Pedestrian Safety Commission can work on that. We have a circulation element in the master plan, and our own master plan, that came up at tonight's, in one of tonight's meeting's comments as well. When the county comes before the courtesy, before the planning board for their courtesy hearing, we have definitely made changes and recommendations. And I know I stated at the last meeting, when they were talking about the path around the reservoir and the Pirate Park, I'm calling it the Regatta Park, that initial application included a dog park, and it included taking down 60 trees further on Cherry Lane. No one, none, no one on the planning board wanted to see that happen. We didn't think it was necessary. If we thought it was necessary to have a dog park, on the west side of Cherry Lane is already cleared. We made other suggestions. If that's what they thought that that was a priority, it could happen somewhere that was already cleared. And that whole part of the application was eliminated. So changes can be made when we have, the agendas are well posted. If anything comes before the planning board, again, what just happened this evening can happen again during those public hearings. So I think changes can be made, voices can be heard in an appropriate setting.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McChu Brown.
So, just, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I was just, we're just talking about what I just brought up, and then everybody will go back, but I just want to get this moving forward.
I do have to agree with my council colleague as well in saying that there is influence that we have with our county. When I was doing my research with respect to, you know, how far back we've gone in developing, I did see a resolution from the planning board with respect to the entrance of the zoo when they were talking about doing that. And one of the requests and the recommendations and caveats for this resolution required a master plan. That was in December. In February, there was a call for public input for a master plan. So I believe in the will of the people and the voice of the people, that your voices are the influence, that we are elected to represent your voices. We may not always agree, but I think that I have certainly a responsibility to listen and support what the majority of the residents say. So to your question, Council President, I would be in support of a resolution that asks the county not to continue to expand the zoo.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Until you get the master plan.
Councilwoman McCaslin, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCaslin.
Okay. So full disclosure, I am not always a big fan of these type of resolutions, because I feel, especially in this case, the county will move forward and do what they feel that they should do, and we have the planning board as our mechanism. But however, growing up in the township, a few things I want to just go back and say. As a kid going to that zoo and enjoying it as somewhat of a petting zoo and cute zoo, and then years later, excited to bring my own children there and mortified the condition of the animals. So in regards to some of the comments tonight, which I thought were excellent, I thought you folks did a great job articulating and informing us. I learned a few things tonight that I did not know. But I also was a little disappointed with a few of the remarks, and I know there's frustration with, you know, words of corruption and whatnot to folks at the county. That zoo has come a long way. The condition of the animals, it was in really, really bad shape 20 years ago, 15 years ago even. So they've done tremendous work, made tremendous progress. But anybody else watched, a Field of Dreams fan in the audience built it, and they will come. And if you remember that movie with Kevin Costner, where they build that, you know, build that baseball field out in the cornfields, and all of a sudden you look out, you know, he looks down at the end of the movie, and you see all the light of, the headlights of the cars coming forward, you know, that's kind of like our zoo, where they're all coming here to West Orange. We have, our business owners have the benefits in regards to our restaurant owners, some businesses in the area, a few of our gas stations and whatnot. So we, you know, it is good commerce for our community, so we always have to be mindful of that. But it has gotten to the point where, I mean, I really feel bad for residents over there. In the summer months, I used to love to drive over to, over to the reservation and walk in the morning, and that's really become difficult to do. I do enjoy McLone's, I do enjoy the complex, but I really feel for that neighborhood and the traffic that has incurred there. So, yeah, I'll support my colleagues with moving forward with the resolution, but I, but I want to, you know, I think the Environmental Commission should probably put it together for us. And again, I just want to see how it's worded. I'm just not going to support, you know, just a bunch of merged things. I think we need to be mindful. Now, don't forget, many of us, and a few of us have referenced that, resolution or not, you know, we pick up the phone, we make phone calls, we express our opinion, we hear you, we see the emails, but again, because I know resolutions sometimes just sit there and, which is frustrating and aggravating. I see better results with phone calls and having tough conversations and meeting with other elective officials, so, but I don't see an issue with this. We're at the time now where this has been tough. It has been tough, so I'll support it. But again, it depends on the wording, because I like to see anything that will be put before us before the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's what I want to bring this up, because I do support the thing, is we need to make West Orange, but in a polite way, in a professional way, because we're all professionals. We're not rabble-rousers. We are the residents of the township of West Orange, and I fully support this. But I think to your point too, that we need the Environmental Commission, and people to have their input into it and let them look at it, because we want everybody to be involved in this. It's got to be a complete document, but it says it in a professional, courteous way, because that's what I believe our township is. That's who we are. That's who West Orange is. Councilman Kocovia, can I have your opinion? Would you support a resolution that asks the county that what we just spoke about?
Yeah, I'd like to see the wording of the resolution.
Okay, so that's, we all agree, want to see the wording of the resolution. Madam Clerk, would I? Madam Clerk, my next step would be what, to discuss with the legal department? And, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Putting together this resolution?
Yeah. Here they are.
Don't make fun of me.
We're not making, what I'm saying is that there's a lot of information that we can send to legal to compile our resolution.
Right, my question is, what you're going, yeah, I'm sorry, what information you're going to need from us or from the Environmental Commission?
We've done this before.
Okay. Okay, thank you. See, I got that moved, so, thank you. Thank you, my colleagues. Okay, okay, now I'll open it back to people. Councilwoman McCartney, your comments.
Okay, a couple other comments that were made. Mr. Rosenberg with the monthly reports, there's absolutely no reason why they can't be posted. Guess the last one we received was at the end of June, wasn't as exciting, you know, so I think now that we're seeing so much growth there, we can post and keep an eye on that. You were talking about the Greenacre funding, you know, there isn't, we haven't applied for that, and it would take two years, because we do need a plan. So part of that resolution to have David Kronheim, which I do have questions about, that's the start of the administration, I believe, that's the start of the administration starting to jumpstart to put a plan together, because there isn't one, and we're not going to be able to apply for the Greenacre funding until we get a plan together. What else? And you talked about the master plan too. The master plan is underway. We start, we had a kickoff back in January. Takes a while, it's a long process. Stakeholders have already been interviewed. I think the interviews are, may still be going on. We do have a circulation element in the master plan, so a lot of what was discussed this evening will come up again. Pedestrian Safety Commission will also weigh in on that between Main Street and other county arteries that we do have that crisscross our town. What else do we have? The comment about affordable housing, the township has always complied with the obligations of COA. Now there are new fair share housing regulations that all new construction has to comply with. We have the library that was just designated, an area needed rehabilitation. That's being, recommendation that's being made to the council. That is affordable housing, and all new, like you just said, all new construction has to provide at least 15 to, oh, 15, I didn't know you said, 15% to 20% for sale or rental units on any, on any new construction. So we're pretty much built out, but any type of rehabilitation or redevelopment would have to adhere to that standard. Did I miss anything? And Rosary, thank you for the comments about the first responders. And about the ring, you know, I know the chief is here. In the resolution that we have here, I agree, the police department is very fair, well-trained. The chief is here, if you can talk about the confidentiality of this. I would appreciate hearing that from the, from that side of the perspective.
Well, should we wait for the response?
Okay, after all the comments?
Wait, after comments, she'll have to come.
And, I mean, I know just personally how my neighbor's doorbell helped in a situation on our street as well, so, you know, I think it can be used to prepare, to discuss that.
Thank you, Mr. Trink. Are you done, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman McChu Brown.
Thank you. I just went through and, to everyone, obviously, we just, you heard my support with respect to the zoo. I share your concerns. I really do certainly appreciate you coming out, taking the time, not just here, but everywhere else that you've advocated for us all on the zoo expansion. You know, climate change being what it is, it's really important for us to do whatever we can to make sure that we're conserving open space. So thank you all for that. To David Yenner, thank you, if he's still here with the Sierra Club, for presenting us with your resolution for us to consider taking part of. I appreciate, Soma, when you're talking about Singha, when you were talking about, you know, the impact that we're discussing on residents, and we're not really thinking about, not all of us are thinking about the impact this is all having on the animals that we have at the zoo. So I appreciate you pointing that out very specifically. Thank you. To the parent, I think she already left, Jacqueline Handy, so sorry that that was your experience with respect to the deer, but absolutely what's going to happen when we continue to destroy the natural habitats of our, the animals that live in the zoo. The gentleman, I vote on your name, please forgive me, with respect to bringing our attention to the illegal practice of transplant, organ transplant, it's something that we don't discuss here. We think it's an issue that is foreign, overseas and abroad, and clearly it is, but there is, you know, certainly that black market that exists in our own borders. And I look forward to reading what you've presented to us. Is that Ted Lustig, the judge? I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, but I really am looking forward to reading the information that you provided. It's very important that we all stay abreast as much as we can on things. Thank you very much. Ms. Malanga, Gary, Lauren, just going through everyone here, thank you for your voices as well. Mr. Kramer, he pointed out the fact that while, and I have to agree, that while, you know, it's self-sufficient, there are other implications with respect to expenditures that the zoo uses to make sure it continues to work. Ms. Myers, thank you so much for your very eloquent take on, and I'll discuss the ring in a minute. But with respect to affordable housing, I do get phone calls, I do get emails from residents, and it's very disheartening for me not to be able to assist in any way, because there is no list or anything, you know, as far as affordable housing is concerned. It would be great if we, we kind of had like a go-to. And I did talk to the mayor about this, and maybe we can have further discussions about that. But, you know, there is, what's on the executive session agenda is with respect to that, and we'll be discussing it. So I look forward to your continued participation in that regard. Okay, so I think that was all of it with respect to the master plan. Ms. Morelli, I'm so sorry that your friend was involved, she's already gone, but always thank you for your advocacy, and I hope that she is doing well. And I am quite surprised that it has been that long, six months when it's nine months of gestation to have a baby, we can't get a TV channel back on. I look forward to finding out what that, what that delay was. With respect to the ring and what's on the agenda tonight, and we'll discuss it further, I am very concerned, and I will, let me just blanketly state that I don't have the privilege of feeling comfortable in my own skin as some of my other council colleagues do. When I walk in a room, or my son or husband walk in a room, whether you are intentionally racist or intentionally biased, we all have implicit biases that, that we are just nurtured with, right? Societal constraints give us that. So I have tremendous concerns about being complicit in participating in what will essentially be a surveillance state, particularly when there's research out there by the Brennan Center, the Pew Research Center, that indicates that historically, crime is at an all-time low. I have been in the unfortunate position, my husband, I'm not sure how many of you know my husband and my children, but they are, they're black, and I have a very mixed family. I have been in a situation where my husband walks in the door first, and they look at him, thinking that he's going to steal something, or he's at a place where he's not supposed to be. My son, having been pulled out of a car... My son hasn't been pulled out of a car because he's waiting for a friend because he doesn't look like he belongs in that area, right? This is in Assis County. So it's not about being derogatory against our police department, I support our police department, I support the family members, my family members who are police officers, but I am also very, very conscious of the fact that in our society today, implicit bias is very real, and if we want to change the culture of how we do things, we need to own it. If I want to give, and I have a ring, I reluctantly have a ring, and I say reluctantly because my husband wanted to get it, I reluctantly have a ring on my door, and it's for my Amazon packages, which, after all of my research in this, I will no longer be paying my prime premium to Amazon because, and here's the, here's the fear with this technology, right? Because we do talk about the technological nuances of facial recognition. Well, unfortunately, the large margin of error with this facial recognition doesn't affect the majority of white male or female, but there is a huge margin of error when it comes to black and brown people. I am not going to participate in circumstances that create endangering both the lives of our police officers and of our residents because someone fits the description. I don't want to have any more Trayvon Martins on our hands, or Tamir Rices, or Michael Browns. This is not about not understanding or accepting that our police officers are well-trained, beyond that. It is about understanding that Amazon has contacted Homeland Security and offered their services so that they can track immigrants. You know how many immigrants, and I'm going to put that in air quotes, have been detained, they're citizens, but because they look like me, and I don't carry around my passport, they're detained. I am not willing to continue to stoke the fears in our community because they are very real, because we need to participate in what, at the end of the day, is a tremendous marketing scheme for Amazon. We are being told, and it's, if you read the memorandum of understanding, it seems very innocuous, right? It seems very, very across the board, this is what's going to happen, but in my research, again, through a lot of Oprah requests that are out there, Bloomfield Police Department put out a joint press, joint press release, which is required for this MOU. There is an email to Michael, the mayor there, to retract that and correct that email, because we are being told verbatim what to say in what circumstances. I don't want corporate policing. I moved to this town because of the diversity, I moved to this town because I respect the first responders here. I, I'm not going to participate in a condition that creates that type of an environment, so it's not about looking at things and being racist, the reality is that these things fail. There have been too many black men, brown men, that fit the profile, fit the description, and I'm just not willing to do that. If there is something that happens, and someone wants my ring download, I may choose to give it to you, or I may not, but neither do I want to put myself in that position to have to. So unfortunately, again, I don't have the privilege to feel like this is just about keeping us safe, us safe from who. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Matuakram. Councilwoman Kesselino?
Thank you, and thank you for your very passionate sharing with your personal circumstances, because I know it's got to be hard to, to share that, and, yeah, no, I definitely hear it, and we got to know each other, so definitely hearing your voice. But I have known the chief for a really long time, so I'm not going to comment on the ring till after I hear from him. I was away this weekend, didn't get a chance, usually I try to, you know, give a phone call beforehand, get a, you know, start wrapping my brain around it, but I do know from years at, with our schools and having cameras in our schools, we never had a, an issue of having a situation, so again, I'm just going to hold off and see what's, why he wants us to go in that direction. But I also do hear you with the technology, because I have a, switched over to a Google phone, which freaks me out on occasion, so, a lot of what we do these days, and I'm not one that's on Facebook a lot, as most of you in the public know, because I'm not always on 401 or all the sites, because I, I prefer my privacy as well, even though I'm a public figure. Getting to the other comments, and thank you folks for being passionate about the ring, doorbell comments. Switching gears to Ridge Road, all the residents that came down to speak about Ridge Road and open space, so I had received a phone call from someone on the commission yesterday that isn't here tonight, that was wondering why I wasn't supportive of having a resolution on for this evening. And the reason for that is not that I'm, you know, I, you know, we approved an appraisal for the property, received information, we have some questions, but the Open Space Commission hasn't brought a recommendation to us for this purchase in writing. And with that being said, there's a lot of questions that I like to see answered in regards to, and I've had conversations with various members of the administration in regards to taking care of the road, because it is a private road, so there will be expense there. The walls, historic feature with those walls on Mount Pleasant Avenue, you know, what's the township responsibility there? Again, I always bring up, I grew up here in the township, you know, going back to, oh wow, I don't want to say how many years since I first got my driver's license, and being 17 years old and having my own mishap on that accident many years ago, I guess I'm going to ask administration out tonight, this is separate from that, but what's the state responsibility with drainage and whatnot? Do they have a drain system there? You know, I can, can we get information on that? So that's, and I'll write you an email, Mr. Gross.
You know, during, should, should the council decide they want to pursue something, obviously, there's a lot more due diligence to be done, there's a lot more due diligence to be done other than just an appraisal, so obviously, that's the kind of thing that you'd have, you'd have to do beforehand if you just, council wanted to move forward.
Exactly, and I know there's only so much money in, in the, in the account, but they could bond out. We also have to deal with Rock Spring, and I know we're using our Green Acres funds there. Mayor never said we would touch the open space funds, again, I need to hear from administration that, that we wouldn't. So there's a lot of questions, so it just wasn't as easy for me, per se, to say, let's just slap a resolution on tonight, because there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I wouldn't have been, been prepared to answer. So I'm looking forward for the Open Space Commission Committee to come to us if that's what they propose to do. Also, there, there's parcels in that property, maybe only a parcel could be purchased right now with the money that they have, so I think there's different alternatives, and I look forward to more information coming our way, so I can make an education, educated decision up here as opposed to going off an appraisal we took about a year ago. So, I look forward to that. Councilwoman Kocovia, are you the liaison for that committee?
With open space?
Yeah, right? Well, open space, right? Open space.
With the Open Space Commission.
Yeah, so maybe next, next meeting, you, I don't mean to put you on the spot tonight, but maybe next meeting, give us an update where the committee is, the commission is with, with the, if they're looking to do the purchase, but I would assume we would get something in writing from the commission supporting such, such an effort.
If it supports, yes, you're absolutely.
If they support, so it's not just as simple as just the council moving forward, they're there to do the due diligence on that and bring it to us so we can make a decision. I don't want to take too much time out. Ms. Morelli, I know she's gone, but again, you know, it's not, maybe she didn't hear me in the beginning of the evening for my liaison report for the school board, I don't know why they're having an issue, due to meet with the new superintendent, I'll find out there, you know, I, I went to our videographer this evening, so I know he's going to go back to them for me to see what he could find out, but, you know, they're waiting on a part, and I don't know what else we can do, it's, it's under their jurisdiction, not ours, they know we're anxious, I know for myself, I, I get better results from the community when we are on, on TV, so folks could hear our answers and, you know, our explanations, and so I prefer when, when we are televised, but we are available on YouTube, and I know that's not, you know, helpful to most, most folks, but we are out there, so it's not like we don't have the cameras rolling and the tape available. And I think that may be it, other than, oh, Rock Spring. Mr. Rosenberg, yes, I would support having that information, I'm not sure if you were here at the beginning of the meeting, I made a statement about Mr. Parker, who has just been appointed there, and so they're looking to, you know, set things up and move things forward, so I'm excited to hear about that, and again, I'll reserve any other comments for the conversation with the appointment for this evening in regards to Rock Spring, but I've been actively involved, I appreciate all the residents in the area giving us major feedback. They've been visiting the club, they've been going there for dinner to see how it is, and that feedback's been so important and crucial in how, you know, they're developing over the summer. This summer, again, we got out of the gate late, due to no, no one's fault, we had the opportunity and, and we jumped on it, but just them working out kinks in their system and, you know, trying to get personnel up and running, so I believe that figures may be skewed from the beginning of the summer, obviously, to the end of the summer, so, but it'll be interesting to analyze that data. All right, we have a lot more, so I'm going to wrap it up, and again, thank you all for your comments, and really appreciate a lot of the information you've brought forward and keep emailing us, we definitely want to, to be informed. Council President?
Thank you, Councilwoman, my turn. Thank you to my colleagues tonight with moving forward the resolution with, with the zoo, I'm very happy about that, that's very productive, so thank you all to my colleagues. We're going to take a quick, Joe, thank you for your comments and everything else, but can I ask you a question, Joe?
Yes.
Since you're on the PIO, you do have a direct connection to the Board of Education when you do your programs and all that, can you also assist in finding out what's going on and what needs to be done so we could fix this? No, 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 I take, that's something for you to do, okay?
I believe Council President has been out since the end of May.
I'm sorry?
I believe that it's been out since the end of May.
Right, but I'm saying is, but we need to know, can you find out what's going wrong?
I have not been able to answer any information.
Okay, then I drop, thank you. I'm going to, my French isn't that good anymore, but, Mr. Estrange, Ted, if he's still here? Yes, sir?
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Thank you for bringing this to the council's attention, all my colleagues, we will go through this, sir, and we will get back to you with a comment, but thank you for bringing to, bring it to our attention. I apologize if I ruined your name, but it's, you know, I just, but thank, but thank you very much. To all of you tonight with property, with open space and Ridge Road and everything else, and to, you know, my colleague said, you know, there are many questions I have, and there are many questions that I was hoping Mr. Lepore would be able to answer for me, because I need to know these things, but because of the situation and the death in his family, but I know once he comes back, there are questions I have, there's things I need to find out to really do this. I mean, open space is important, but I also want to know what impact it's going to have on the township expense-wise. There, there are things, once we buy that property, then we're going to be responsible for what's going to have to be done, and we know that, I mean, so that's, you buy something, it becomes, it becomes your responsibility, but I, I have questions in that, I have questions on the funding, funds available, Green Acres money, whatever, but we need to have that, and everybody needs to sit down, have everybody's ducks in a row, so everybody's on the same page. That's what we need to do, so we don't do something wrong, and we will, we'll make sure we address that, I really want to do that. And I appreciate Gary, and I appreciate Joyce, our conversations have been very educational, and I appreciate the time and the effort, I do. On Rock Spring, sir, we, we're working in, Councilwoman Kesselino and I have met with the residents in the neighborhood, you know, we understand the concerns you have, and we're not just going to fluff it off, there are things we need, that we need to know, that we need what our police department needs to do, what our Department of Public Works needs to do, and the future development of Rock Spring. It's something we were very important in buying, but we have to always watch, whatever we do, how it's going to affect you and the rest of the residents in the area. We can't just do something to do it that we think is great, we need to really think it through and say, okay, if we do this, what's going to happen to you? What's going to happen to your neighborhood? What impact or inconveniences is it going to have on you? So that's why we're working on this, and I'm sure all my colleagues feel the same way. It's something we did, it's a trust that you gave us and supported us to buy it, now we have to make sure we use it wisely, and whatever development we do, or any changes we do, or programs we do, we need to make sure it doesn't have an adverse effect on our residents and our community, so we will be handling that, and please, send us emails, we, we answer our emails, we want to hear from, you know, our residents, I mean, it was great, the things that we've done, we're all done by a lot of input from emails, you know, don't just hold it inside, let us know how you feel, you know. Is Ms. Pirelli still here?
No.
Okay, well, we will address the TV station, that needs to be addressed, it's kind of embarrassing that for so many months that our residents can't watch our council meetings that we pay for on our two community access channels, so they need to be, we need to find out and get it fixed.
It's summer and you're not there.
What? Councilman, the Board of Education, it's, it's in their, it's their responsibility.
No, 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 I know that, and Councilwoman, I agree with you, I'm just saying, as a councilman elected by the residents, it, it, it needs to be addressed, it's been eight, how many months? Eight months?
And that's already been determined?
And I'm not criticizing, Councilwoman, I, Councilwoman, I appreciate that, but we, we need to have it addressed, and whatever the council and the township needs to do, even though it's the Board of Education, we can't.
But you're making it sound like it's not an excuse, they're waiting on a piece to get handled, so.
I understand, and I appreciate your, your, your input too, I just think it needs to be, and I think, I'm sure you will do it, so it needs to be fixed. Okay, but thank you to all coming tonight, thank you for your input, it shows just what a great community we are, and I thank my council colleagues for it. And just about affordable housing, and I'm forgetting that, you know, Mr. Alfred is here, you know, Mr. Alfred has been very influential and instrumental in getting our affordable housing numbers up, I mean, Central Avenue, Phase Two of the development down here will have affordable housing, so we're not ignoring it, it's something that's very important, and it will be addressed, and please, make sure you give us your input. Okay, Madam Clerk, thank you all for coming tonight.
Okay. We're going to review the consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting July 16, 2019.
Consent?
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Resolution 1905 of the West Orange Planning Board recommending to the Township Council that it designate certain properties as an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to NJSA 40A:12A-1. Okay.
Yes.
Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman Kocovia, any resolutions being pulled this evening or questions?
Yeah, I'm not looking to pull any, but I have questions on several.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Can we, can we just go through?
Okay, fine. If I go around the room, okay, if any, is any, Councilwoman Kesselino, are you pulling any resolutions?
No, I am not, I may make a comment or two.
Okay, Councilwoman Matuakram, are you?
I, I am pulling resolutions, 201, 210 and 211, please. And I do have other questions on that.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney, are you pulling any?
I'm not pulling any resolutions, but I do have a question on 21019 on Rock Spring.
Okay, so you have one question, okay? Councilwoman Kocovia, would you mind if I just like go with the, okay? Councilwoman McCartney, would you ask your question, please?
Are you pulling any resolutions?
Uh, no, I'm not pulling, because it's already been addressed. No, I'm not pulling, because it's already been addressed, so.
Thank you.
So, you're pulling 201, 210, 211?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Who's asking their questions first?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman McCartney has a question.
I just had a question on the resolution 21019.
Well, we pulled it, so why don't we?
Oh, this one was pulled, 210?
It's pulled, 21019?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Kesselino, you have questions?
Just a couple of quick comments in regards to 191, 192, 193, the work done by our blau blau, our council for the tax appeals, kudos with the increased assessments and additional revenue to the township. So, I just wanted to point that out. But sometimes these appeals come swinging back our way. And in Mr. Gross, we had a conversation today, 209, where else, and 199, again, just kudos with the business department, just being more and more cost-effective, more efficient, more efficient with the technology. And it's great, we're, you know, getting into the update and getting away from our anti-hay ways. That's it.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, Council President.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Kukoviac.
So, I just had a question about Agenda Item I, Resolution 199-19. This is a, basically, an option, exercising an option to keep on a couple of contractors that we are using for our IT systems management. And I just wanted to get a little bit better idea of how this is going, because it looks like over the period of the existing contract, we spent close to half a million dollars with them and trying to get an idea of how they were performing and what we expect to be spending going forward. Because a lot of these projects, you should be getting a declining amount of the cost of support ongoing. So, I'm just trying to get a feel for where this is going. It's obviously a lot of money, just trying to.
Yeah, one of the things that it's kind of difficult to look at.
Talk into the mic, please.
Kind of difficult to look at the dollar volume, because one of the things is they are also resellers for state contract for Dell computers. So, when we buy our Dell computers through state contract, which we'll bring before resolutions here to the council, we'll be buying them through these vendors as well. So, when I print out their volume, and fairly so, they are getting that volume, but it is not indicative of the maintenance levels or the cost of, just the maintenance. It's also, these contracts are for maintenance, and then there's a special contract for project management or project implementation. So, for instance, we will be utilizing them for any of our upgrades or new programs that we put together. So, that's reflective in these numbers. So, I would say moving forward, you know, from a maintenance point of view, it's not realistic to think that these numbers, that the maintenance costs are going to go down. Maintenance costs are not going to go down because we are ever-expanding our use of technology to save money in other areas. We've got, you know, we reduced our staffing significantly over the last 10 years, and one part of the reason we've been able to do that and continue to maintain services is we're finding more efficient ways through technology to provide services and to do business in general. So, I would say that as a matter of goal, we want to maintain the levels, at least look to maintain the levels, not increase incrementally more than what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you. I'm going to save my questions for Agenda Item K, Resolution 201-19, because Councilwoman Matu Brown has pulled that, so I'll just join in that conversation. I think that appropriate, Council President?
That's fine, Councilman, thank you.
The next one is Agenda Item L, Resolution 202-19, approving the audit corrective plan for the Township of West Orange. I just wanted to make sure I understood the comments that were made by the auditor.
The comment?
Yes, well, there were a couple of comments.
A yearly comment.
Yeah, there was a couple of comments. Let me just, if I could, on page 141, it talks about the purchase order system and encumbrance system. And that's actually what comes up in the recommendations a little bit further down.
Yes.
So, I'll just ask it at that point. But I'm just trying to find a couple of other comments. I'm sorry, I'm just looking for my notes. There's a comment about cybersecurity, and I wanted to see what we were doing in the realm of cybersecurity because of the ransomware that's actually been successfully used against other municipalities, some of them quite large. And I just, without disclosing any sort of specifics on defenses, I would like to get a better idea of what we're doing in terms of against cybersecurity.
Well, it's a challenge. It's a challenge that everybody faces. In terms of that, we are moving forward, going back to the previous conversations before, we are constantly look to upgrade our backup systems to separate them so that they're not contiguous to, so that if we were to get one of these types of viruses that come in, that basically takes over your entire system, to the extent that we have our backup system that is separate apart from that, that will help. But there's no 100%, because at some point in time, the backup system will connect. So, it's, but there are tactically things that we're doing. And we don't have all the money in the world that we would love to have to protect ourselves, but we're always looking to enhance that and spend what we need to spend to get a level of comfort. And, you know, we're looking at, one of the things we haven't, don't have or haven't had is a secure email. We're looking at that as far as upgrading our email systems to implement some secure email as well, which will be helpful. We currently have a screening process outside before all of our email goes to an outside company, before it comes into us, and they are screening. They're, you know, one of the larger companies in this industry that does that. So, we're screening a lot of that, trying to make sure that we minimize our risk again once and for all at a cost that we can afford.
Do you, do we have cybersecurity insurance?
We have some level of that, you know, and that's one of the things that every year is we fill out questionnaire and talk about, you know, the improvements that we've made in the areas that we have, you know, potential issues with. And, you know, we try to address those during the year. So, it's something that's, it's more than on our radar. It's in the agendas, and we're dealing with it on a constant basis.
Okay. As part of this, I guess maybe this consulting that we were just previously talking about, do we actually engage specific cybersecurity consultant or consultants or consulting firm?
Not a consultant, but like I said, the firms that we deal with are cybersecurity firms.
Okay. And just coincidentally, I couldn't get onto my email, my town email for, I don't know, an hour or two this afternoon. Was there an issue?
We had some, we had some network issues.
Okay, I was just wondering if it was you or whether it's me. Okay. On page, just moving on, on page, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to see the number. Page 142 of the audit, it talked about payment of claims, and it seemed to be suggesting that the township take a specific look at, about requisitions. It talked about, "We recommend that all requisitions are submitted prior to any commitment to services to avoid confirming orders." I don't recall that on previous audits. Maybe it was there, but.
It's all entwined with confirming orders and, you know, the one recommendation that was made, and it's a recommendation we've had before, and while we're doing better, we're still not perfect at it, and, you know, it'll be a long time probably before we get perfect at it. But one of the issues we have is that from time to time, because of the nature of situation that someone is in, they will go ahead and place an order before they get a purchase order. We're now, you know, we're at the point now where we always have a purchase order before it's paid, before it's presented for payment. So, we've made some progress on that. But from time to time, it does happen, somebody rushes out and buys something, and then a purchase order isn't generated until we get the bill, and then that's, that's, that's an issue, and that triggers that. And the reason being is that we want to make sure nobody commits to township to pay for something, and we not have the money. So, for the most part, you know, our fractions are small dollars, and they're not, they're not large dollars, and not going to be a problem for us. But having said that, it's still an important issue, and we focus on it every day.
I just know it comes up on a pretty regular basis.
Yeah, and, 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 don't be, every town has an issue with this. This is, this is across-the-board issue with municipalities, and I just, it's the nature of the way we do our accounting and the way we do our business. It happens. What is typical is to only have a single recommendation in an audit. That's pretty extraordinary. I have to say that we're very proud of the staff, what they've done this year in order to bring us to that. As we always say, we like it when they have to ask us, you know, they have to find us on an issue like this, which means they haven't found a heck of a lot of other things, so.
Is, does the township do anything on a, I don't know whether disciplinary is the right adjective, but do you take steps to make sure that the employees don't keep doing this? Because as you said, it's good to make sure you have the funds. It's also good to get into the process because it's an additional control, so that, you know, more than one person is saying, yes, this is something we want to buy. Is there any sort of discipline that you can apply to these folks?
We have disciplinary activities that we have talked about and will potentially could use. If it rises to the level, for instance, where someone is just flagrantly not following the rules on a repetitive basis, that we can go to that. We haven't gone to that yet. But we've, we've talked about it with staff, so to let them know that this is serious.
So, the purchases that are being made here, are we talking about tens of dollars, hundreds of dollars, or there's biggest thousands of dollars?
Wouldn't be thousands. I mean, I have to go back and look at the specifics of the particular ones. But generally speaking, it's small-dollar purchases because they don't require quotes. They don't, you know, they're not, it's not the thing where you have to go out and get a bid or a quote or anything. Anything like that, obviously, by definition, goes through this process. It's small-dollar items, relatively small-dollar items. But certainly, you know, could it be $1,000? Yeah, but it can't, it's not going to be, it's not going to be $6,000.
Okay. Thank you. Agenda Item S, Resolution 209-19. This is a resolution to order contract for document management services, not to exceed $50,000. I'm sorry, I just found the documentation to be confusing, so I wondered if I could just ask you very briefly about this, because your response was, oh, we're going to buy the software. And so, but, but the documentation talks about all these different ways they can charge us and.
Well, you could do A, you could do B, you could do C, you could do D. So, we're, it doesn't pay us to do anything other, to buy things, because, you know, if we finance it, we're paying finance charges that are far above what our financing charges are. So, we're buying software, this, you know, your questions were, you know, what's our exposure on this? We're buying software like any other software. There's an annual requirement to do software maintenance so that you keep up with any of the software changes. That's really our only ongoing commitment in this contract. Again, what we submitted to you, sometimes, you know, we were faulting for giving too much information. This is the, everything they gave us about this, and it's a lot into it, and it kind of, it's not the contract we're going to sign. We're going to sign the contract with the terms and conditions that are outlined in the resolution with, you know, not to exceed $50,000. It's around 44,000 is what we're looking at, and we're looking at, potentially, there's some extra funds, just A for things maybe we didn't consider. We've learned enough about going through these processes, is that there's always something that we need to think about, and as well as the potential need if we need additional licenses. One of the things that we don't know how it's going to play out is because we're, from this, we're going to end up with a public portal where the public, we can then choose documents that, for instance, the clerk's office, that are going to be public documents, which will be completely searchable, and they'll have all the same ability to find documents that we would have, the public will have that as well. What we're not sure is, is what the, what the demand for that's going to be and what the backlog is going to be based on licenses. So, we may need additional licenses to make sure that we're able to meet the demand of the public once we do this. So, there's some money in there for that as well.
Okay. Just to clarify, so it makes sense when document management, if you've got a paper, paper document you want to convert to digital, you scan it, and then you throw it into the software, and it gets indexed and metas and all that other stuff. If you've still, if you've got original digital documents, they also go into the system, they just don't need to be scanned?
Everything.
So, where does the paper portion of this come in? Do we scan?
Eventually, hopefully, well, it's just, the only thing we're going to have in paper are original, originals, and once we're certified, many of those documents will be able to be destroyed pretty quickly. So, that's also going to save us in long-term in terms of our storage costs.
Right, but they seem, the contracts seem to be saying that they were going to provide that paper management system.
Yeah, that's just an itemization of what the cost would be if we utilized them to do scanning. We're not going to utilize that scanning.
Okay, okay. And just, I did notice that it talked about the 5% increase in annual maintenance.
Yeah, it's only going to be maximum 2%.
Okay, when you execute the contract, okay. I also just wanted to ask, Agenda Item V, that's Resolution 202, the resolution designated certain properties downtown as an area of rehabilitation. I'm, I want to just go to Mr. Lepore's memo that talks about what the plan is very generally, and I know he's not here, but I did want to ask you, at the end of the, of his letter, I'm just, there it is. The next-to-last paragraph says, "Additionally, reviewed the age of the existing housing stock along Main Street in these two blocks, and total of, in the first block, 116, total of 45 housing units, including 34 at the Welland Hotel, constructed 1882 to 1932 in block 116.01. There are a total of 23 housing units with construction during the period 1871 to 1923." Then if you go to the final paragraph, it talks about, "Both the sewer and water system along Main Street need to be improved. Rehabilitation program will promote the improvement of the water and sewer systems and the existing housing stock, which will improve the public welfare for those along Main Street and surrounding neighborhood." What exactly is the plan at this point for improving the existing housing stock?
Well, there is no plan. The plan, the plan would occur after you make a determination that there need to redevelopment, then, or rehabilitation, then a plan, then you would authorize a plan to be developed.
So, is this going to come to, what, from the process going forward, what's going to come to the council to be reviewed and approved then?
This is all that is, is rehabilitation. This does not come with any plan, as Mr. Gross said. The study's been authorized, the study's been authorized, and the higher rule is preparing it for the planning.
Okay, so this is, this is really just an FYI, right? There's nothing.
Rehabilitation is a subset. I don't know if that's the right terminology, but rehabilitation does not permit there to be any financial agreement, i.e. a pilot, there won't be any RAB bonds, and there won't ever be any condemnation. But it does permit, to the extent we're looking to do improvements in this area, that to be considered in a comprehensive manner. at doing improvements in this area, that to be considered in a comprehensive manner. So, again, if these same properties are going to be the subject of a study, and then the planning board will look at it, determine whether or not it meets the criteria in the statute for an area needing redevelopment, and then if they recommend it, they may recommend part, or all, or not. If they do, then I'll come to you at that point.
Then, then it would dump for a plan.
Well, yeah, plans always.
But it's, it's pretty much the same process that we have followed for other redevelopment zones. It's just, this is, this is different because it's rehabilitation, and it's limited to the rehabilitation.
Correct.
Right. And I can understand rehabilitation of the sewers and, and the water pipes. That's completely understandable. But I'm trying to get a.
You can do rehabilitation of all, all buildings in that zone. I mean, I'm not saying that's what needs to be done, but, but in an area in need of rehabilitation, quite frankly, usually includes primarily the housing stock, because of the nature of it. And that's what, you know, the statutes anticipate.
Yes. So, what's the, what's the spread of possibilities for rehabilitating the housing stock there? Does that mean a paint job for a particular property, or does that mean we can knock it down?
No, definitely doesn't mean that.
So, so what does it mean? I'm just.
Again, that'd be part of the plan consideration, I mean.
For instance, a plan like this gives you additional authorities that you don't have elsewhere. For instance, you could have design standards that you could develop, okay, that you can't give now, so that moving forward, whatever work is done, is done within the scope of the plan and the design on private housing. That's just, that's an example of one of the things that you could do.
So, what are some of the other examples of what you could do? Can you, can you force a sale? Can you force them to, can you knock down the building?
No, but you could, you could finance incentives, you know, in terms of, of creating, creating money for designs, or for, for facade, things of that nature. You could provide funds for that. There's things that you can do there, because it's, because of the special nature of it, that you can't do elsewhere. I'm not saying you shouldn't do that, I'm saying you could do that.
Because you just, I, I'm just, I'm not concerned, but I'm interested, because we've got just a few blocks down east of these, of these properties, you've got 175 Main Street, where it was a massive project to change the face of the, of the property. I'm just trying to see if, by going the rehabilitation route, whether that's a potential, that we could have another, you know, downtown redevelopment area.
Well, that, again, you're going to get a report after the planning board considers it, and then you'll have to consider them at that time.
Right.
Again, you'll be part of it.
Right. Is that the potential, is that one of the potential?
What? You mean within the scope of the statutes?
Yeah. What, no, not so much with the statutes, but what are we planning? I mean, the administration is.
Again, we're under, as you know, significant litigation. So, anytime you start to say that, there is no master plan. This is a step in the process. As you know, we currently have a redevelopment that goes up to Batcock. This starts the other side of Batcock, you can see the area, and what it is, is that some of the property owners have come to the administration saying, hey, we want to continue this process. And we, but we said, hey, we don't change zones or whatnot. It goes to the process, and that's what's happening. So, everybody will have input. There is no master plan here. There's no agenda. There's no developer. There's no nothing. Mr. Lepore has done his job. If you accept his report, and again, no one's pulled it off the consent agenda, so this is just the first step of a process. There will be no condemnation. There will be no pilot under this process as exists now. If you come back and you get a report, and you, and the planning board recommends to you to consider it as an area needing redevelopment, then you'll have an opportunity to consider that, as to whether it meets the criteria or not. But it would be premature to do that.
So, the, so the planning board could come back to the council with a recommendation that we move from this, the idea of an area in need of rehabilitation, to an area in need of redevelopment?
You've already referred that to them, for their consideration, and you've authorized expenditure of funds for them to get a planner's report.
Right. I'll just repeat my question, because maybe I wasn't clear. Is it possible that what we are seeing as an area in need of rehabilitation, and as Mr. Gross was saying, as you were saying, it doesn't involve pilots and condemnation and all that, is it possible that the planning board can come, make a recommendation to the council that says, let's convert this to an area in need of redevelopment?
Again, non-condemnation. I don't think, I can't remember what your referral was. But yes, the short answer is yes. That will come in a different, after they've heard them. They don't even have a report, so on that. This is the only report here requires in terms of an area in need of rehabilitation.
Right. So, if I understand you correctly, it's possible that we could have another redevelopment project in town, downtown on Main Street. It's possible.
Not unless you approve it.
That's correct. But, no, I understand that. I understand. I'm trying to get the boundaries of the law. I'm just trying to find out what the boundaries of the law is, are, and perhaps what the intent of the administration was to go.
The intention of the administration is to support downtown in every shape possible, and to consider any type of planning mechanisms that help support downtown. And so, that's all, my understanding is, certain property owners who have invested in this area have asked for this process to begin, and that's all that has occurred, is you have everything we have.
Okay.
We have nothing else. There's no other plans that I'm aware of at this time. But we hope there's lots of plans, and we hope that. Keep in mind, the whole reason that we spent literally, as you know, the last 15 and 20 years on the innocent battery factor and this around the area, is we wanted to spread. We wanted to be private investment, public investment, and we want the whole downtown. So, so again, anything that'll support the downtown is obviously important to everyone. So, this is all we have.
I just want to make sure, if I understood you correctly, what you said a couple of minutes ago, it's possible that the planning board could come back to the town council with the planning board's recommendation that this become an area in need of redevelopment?
Yes, you've already, you made the referral to them. You allocated the money to hired parole to do that study. The study did not yet, could happen. It may not happen, it will happen. I checked on it today where it's at. It's not going to be available for a couple more weeks. Part of it, some of the processes have taken a little longer, because of potential revenue or another. But the short answer is, your study does not exist yet, and as soon as we have it, it'll go to the planning board, and you can obviously have a courtesy copy. The county will release it to the public. And the planning board, just like in every other redevelopment, has a full hearing with testimony, cross examination. Then it comes to you, you make a determination, then we get to a plan if it meets that criteria.
Counselor, Counselor McCourt, he has a.
Just, just thinking, to pick up.
Then Counselor.
Part of this conversation attached to this resolution that we have, attached to the memorandum that we have, the preliminary investigation report, there is a resolution dated May 14th, that Richard's referring to, that talks about the process that we're going through, and here's a whereas, prior to the adoption of the resolution designated the study area township, part of the resolution, whereas a township desires to also explore whether the study area may be appropriate area for consideration for redevelopment. So, one, yes, can lead to another, but not until the study is done. That's all it is. That was already approved in May. This was on the letter that was in there. It's attached to that. This is May 14.
What, on this? Yeah, just a second.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
This one?
Is it present?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
On this?
Anybody else have a question?
I have.
I have.
It's okay.
On Rock Spring, did we start Rock Spring?
No, not yet.
Okay.
So, are any other questions on the consent agenda?
No.
Not me, that's all my questions. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just waiting for, and this is just for a matter of, for the public who is here or watching. Mr. Gross, if you can just talk about 192, 193, and 194, with respect to the, the tax appeal?
Yeah.
To increase the assessment. And also, just because it's on a contingency fee, what is the percentage, the rate of increase for each?
It's in the resolution.
Is the rate of increase?
Yes.
I saw the amount. I didn't see the rate. I could have missed it.
Yeah, well, let me, let me tell you about what they are.
Mm-hmm.
Every property in the municipality is assessed a certain amount of value. We have a professional that we have hired to look at certain circumstances, or at all, any circumstance within, within where he believes that the assessment is too low. Normally, you know, we're in litigation because a property owner thinks their assessment is too high, and they will appeal it to have it lowered. This is called reverse appeal, where the municipality can actually appeal the assessment to increase. In this case, there's four cases where our attorney has taken that on and won, or come to agreement with, to increase the, the value of the properties. This is important that, to understand that he does this all at his own expense and risk, and if, in the cases that aren't successful, whatever his costs are, are, he, he bears. So, this is really a net win for the municipality, for us. Now, there were four resolutions on tonight, 192-19, which is address of 6 Summit Street, where there is an increase in the assessment of a half a million dollars. So, what that means is, and I'm not going to do the math, but basically, the tax rate, the current tax rate of around four percent, in total, there'll be four percent of that half a million dollars will be increased, that will be coming in this year for this one property. The, the next property is on, I'm sorry, street address on Pleasant Valley Way, an increase from 3,246 to 3,550. So, that's a relatively small increase compared to the others, but a increase nonetheless. The, the next one is.
There's actually two properties in that resolution.
Yeah, Pleasant Valley Way property.
It's in a park, it's oriented to Park, of Combs on that corner.
That's, that's correct. I'm sorry. And the other was 5,791 to 6,391. And then, on 8 Route Circle, this one is from 13,194 to 6,165 in 18, and then is subsequent in other, in other years going up. So, the, the, these are net increases for the taxpayer. And one more, this was also a significant one. This is in, from 13,586 to 15,716 in 18, and then additional in subsequent years. So, this is a net increase for taxpayers. This will go to our surplus this year, which we're very protective of, and
Yes.
We appreciate the hard work that Mr. Blau does for us.
Ms. Counselor? Could I just follow, because I had asked for, what, what are the commissions that the Blau Law Firm receives for each one of these?
He gets one-third of whatever we say.
No, I understand that. I understand that it's one-third. But I don't know the exact number, and that's what I was looking for.
We'll have to calculate that.
Right. That's why, like, eventually, when you get a chance, would you please do that? And also, when you bring affirmative cases, resolutions, authorizing resolutions in the future, could you just put the amount of the commission in there so that?
We prefer, we prefer not to do that in the resolution, because when the tax collector actually goes to put it into the system, the numbers are maybe off fraction amounts. But I'll do it on the side for you, if you like. That would be.
That would be good. Or you could say, just say approximately. You could just say approximately, and we'd all understand. But it would be helpful to us, because that really shows.
Well, the truth is, the resolutions are done by the attorneys, and that's why they're attorneys, they're not mathematicians.
But just to keep in mind, again, we're not paying illegal fees for this, and keep in mind, you can't do it with exactitude, because future years, you don't know the tax.
Right, right.
So, it's never going to be a number you can really, whatever.
But I think of all of these, there's only one that's for a future year. Everybody else is this current year, so we, we do know that number. So, again, if we could just do an approximate, it would be very helpful, I think, to the council. Please.
Is there, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
I do want to thank Mr. Gross, Albert, and Mr. Mann, Albert, for having come in here for three and a half hours, always being available to answer questions or issues if they come up. So, I do want to thank them, and thank them for their presence.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the administration is ready on Resolution 201-19. Chief James Beavitt is present on behalf of the town council.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here to clarify a few things. I, to be honest with you, I thought this thing would fly way under the radar and just pass on consent. It didn't really seem like an issue, and to my knowledge, and speaking with chiefs throughout the county, it was not an issue in the towns that adopted it. But I, I'll laud you for doing your due diligence. We'll leave it at that. There's just so much misinformation out there, that this has kind of taken upon a life of its own. This is just a portal that, let me start over. The door, a doorbell that videotapes, I think we could probably agree for the most part is a good thing, and if you don't think so, you don't buy one. Nobody's making you buy it. So, let's say it's a good thing. We're not endorsing Amazon or Ring. There's other companies out there that do these. I would, I would suggest anybody get this, because I think personally it's a good crime prevention tool. But Ring has taken it to another level, that they've given a portal for people to share their video. They can have a Ring doorbell and not join this portal in their neighborhood, which has a geofence just kind of limited to their neighborhood. It's not the whole town. They can join it, or they cannot join it. If they choose to join it, they can upload or they cannot upload. It's not automatic. There's no facial recognition involved. It's not a Fourth Amendment search, as the woman questioned. Fourth Amendment searches are government intrusion. This is something that a private citizen is uploading. We have access to it by this memorandum of agreement. As far as the press release, it's right in the memorandum of understanding that it has to be a joint press release agreed to by both sides before it goes out. And we're not going to endorse anybody. We're not going to endorse Ring. We're going to endorse this portal as a good mechanism for crime prevention in neighborhoods. But I would certainly suggest that probably how our PIO works on the verbiage, but it goes eventually to legal before anybody signs off on that press release. I said there's no facial recognition. You mentioned Trayvon Martin. I don't know if you would like to, Councilman, if you would like to remind everybody who Trayvon Martin is, rest in soul. Do you want to do that?
I, I would, thank you. And the facial recognition technology is not available here yet, but they have filed a patent in December to have that accessible, and that was just part of my concern.
I understand. We, we don't have it in our memorandum of understanding, so it's not, by signing this doesn't, even if they come out with that and they use it, it doesn't give us access to it.
And also.
I'm not a big fan of it personally right now. I think it's, it's in its infancy, and I think it's something that should continue being developed in the private sector, but for enforcement purposes right now, it's not there.
Okay. And Trayvon Martin, Tamir Rice, and Michael Brown, they were all young black men who were profiled, and unfortunately, because they were profiled, lost their lives. Trayvon Martin was walking through his neighborhood with a packet of Skittles and an iced tea bottle, or Snapple bottle, I'm sorry, and was presumed to have been there where he didn't belong, when he in fact was going to his father's house, and was assaulted and killed by a, so, was a resident neighbor who was, took it upon himself to do neighborhood watch, if you will. That notwithstanding the fact that there is racial, large racial disparities in education, in schooling, in policing, that's not contested. That is research. It is, it is there. And my concern is, when I see these videos posted on social media, it's typically someone of color, and, and just the perception of that scares me. The perception of participating in that scares me. I don't think that we live in an environment, and particularly when the disparities are so large in, in our, in our structures, right, in our schools, in our policing departments, in our jails. I met with the, the executive director, David Boyd, of the Newark Detention Center on August 2nd, and the first thing he said was, look around. You don't see a lot of people that look like. You don't see a lot of people that look like me in this facility." That is undeniable. There are biases in all of our social structures, unfortunately, and I, speaking from someone who is a person of color, is alarmed at the fact that this will just be something else. Again, I have one. If I choose to share my video with you, I think that that's my personal choice, but to put this out there and in fact, you know, make our residents sort of, you know, assist in policing, not that they shouldn't, in this regard is very frightening. I've looked at some of those videos and it's pretty grainy at night, particularly when you see someone approaching your ring. I can see a lot of opportunities for there to be increased disparities in our community and quite frankly, tensions raised in our community, unfortunately.
Okay. So we can't access this without an active case number, just to, the real, this is available anyway. Whether we do this here or you collectively do this here this evening or not, this is available to residents that have a Ring doorbell. They can still do it and share it and all those biases can occur, but the reason I really wanted to drill down on the whole Trayvon Martin thing was, and you answered it correctly because I can't tell you how many times I've heard that he was killed by a police officer.
No, I would never misspeak.
And you were right. You were right, but I was confident you would be. I wasn't trying to say, yeah. The fact that I was, my point I wanted to drive home is that maybe if law enforcement was involved rather than an untrained security officer, Trayvon Martin would be alive today. I don't know.
There's many circumstances surrounding racial bias incidents.
We're just asking for a seat at the table for what the residents who own a Ring doorbell can already do. Basically, voting this down is saying, the residents can look at all this and have access to crimes. I mean, we've solved crimes with our neighboring communities, have a couple of the chiefs that are on the list from Ring that are participating in the portal of solve crimes through it. So everybody can look at it except the West Orange Police Department. It's there, join it. You got a Ring doorbell, share your information, but let's not tell the police. I mean, it's sort of counterproductive.
It's not, let's not tell the police. It's a choice that I as a resident-
But you still have that choice. You don't lose that.
Have that independent to me.
You volunteered that you have a Ring doorbell. You still have that choice. You have the choice to join the portal or not join the portal. And if you join, you have the choice whether to share that data or not share that data. You can share it or you can just leave it on your own hard drive.
Okay. Well, I just want to be very clear, particularly since this is something that will be listened to later. It is not a matter simply of voting it down. You're not willing to help, right, secure our residents. I am trying to help secure our residents, particularly those that are underprivileged, underserved, marginalized and oppressed by systems that have been created to do so. I am not willing to participate in that forum that just gives that much more of an opportunity for that to be maybe the case. I'm not willing to be there. Neither am I willing to support a company like Amazon who is actively looking to continue to seek immigrants out, whether documented or undocumented, because those are also our residents here in town and I am not going to participate in that. And unfortunately, when we talk about immigration, just like one of our residents earlier said, if they break the law and they're immigrants and they should, coming here seeking asylum is not illegal. Just because you're documented, that does not mean you have broken the law. There is no criminal charge. The people that are being held in the ICE detention centers currently are being held as detainees, unfortunately, without having broken a law. There is no criminal charge. They're civilly detained. They should not be in jail, but that's a story for another day. I don't want to continue to stoke those fears that we don't call it out when it's said. The fact of the matter is that being an immigrant in this country, documented or undocumented, does not make a crime. And I just am not willing to support a company like Amazon and I'd be very saddened and disappointed to see a community who has spoken out against this support that.
Can I?
Yes, Councilwoman Castellino.
So I appreciate your passion, but buying the ring itself, didn't you already support Amazon? Is it-
Again, and like I said earlier, Michelle, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Castellino, when I did my research-
Yeah, yeah.
Is when I found out how involved Amazon's relationship is and how problematic that relationship is with ICE.
So with that point, I just want to ask the chief a couple of questions because I hear where you're going and your advocacy and I commend you for it. However, where I, maybe I'm just simplifying this, is if you, I have the ring now and I think all we're just doing here is just skipping a step. So I have the ring now, I have a situation, I call the police. I now have to burn a CD or to get this, like right now, that's how I get the information to you right now.
Correct.
So now, we passed this ordinance and I only want to give you today because yesterday I had a party and, you know, maybe somebody from, left my house, might have alcohol or whatever, you know, and could have got into an accident and you want to come back to my home. You heard somebody was at my house. A resident brought this up to me, so I haven't had any parties lately. So are you, can you, can you make, can you, can you make the resident give you information from a prior day if you sign up for this?
No, I can't. There's no, there's no compulsion to do that. It's completely voluntary. The only way you could be, I can't make a resident do anything. A judge can issue a court order that something happened, but that, that exists now with or without this MOU.
Well, that's what I'm saying because as long as you have a camera and they know you have a camera that's operational, so that's what I'm trying to say. Understanding your point and some of the, some of the emails I've been receiving, but all we're doing is making their job harder. Don't shake your head.
I can.
All their, well, you can. That's true.
That's right. I can. I will.
But the way I'm looking at this is that neighbor, whether, is going to give them that information anyway, except they'll just get it quicker.
And I can't tell you how many times in investigations we've had to wait days to get that information because people don't know how to operate the system, they got to wait for somebody to come back that's out of state, things like that. This makes, this just makes it simpler. Something, something that you're volunteering to give us anyway, as the resident who has this, it's just making it simpler.
And just two points from the administration. Number one, and again, I know the councilwoman and I know other people in the council have said this before, the administration's confidence in the job that Chief Abbott and the police department have done on all levels with regard to sensitivity of these issues and respecting everything you're saying about bias, which exists, as you properly said, in all of society, is beyond reproach. What Chief Abbott, under, you know, in conjunction with the business administrator and whatnot, have done over the last 22 years with this police department is probably unheard of. And we are certified and they take everything you've indicated seriously, but that doesn't mean it's not a 24/7/365 job, as the chief knows, to talk to residents, to be out there and whatnot. And I think the second thing you would totally agree on is that this technology has solved crimes. We all know that the double homicide in Maplewood that occurred, they caught the guy at Newark Airport because Ring video caught him and they got to Newark Airport before he boarded a plane to leave this country. So that is real immediate. We all know in Tennessee, that gentleman who escaped prison, there was a couple in their house and they saw him, it was on the Today Show, in the garage, in the refrigerator. If anybody saw that the other day. So this technology, and as the chief said, this is totally voluntary. No one is requiring anybody to be part of this apparatus. They are, and we recently, as you know, had a number of car break-ins. They went, they made arrests when in the past it's been impossible to arrest people who break into cars. So again, doesn't mean that Chief Abbott and every member of this department shouldn't be sensitive to everything you're saying and they must be, whether this exists or not. And I'm sure the chief, and we know from the administration, that they implement systems and train sensitivity on all these issues because of that bias. So the bottom line is, this technology solves crimes. This technology, there is never, if somebody next to you and was, their house was broken into or their car was broken the night before and they knocked on your door and the police said, "Do you have Ring?" And you had it, just like you said you do have it? Well, there's very few neighbors who would say, "Oh, I won't show it to you." Because it could have been your car as well as my car. But if they do say, "We're not giving it," you know, again, it's a car break-in. They're not going to go to Hampton Newark and get, you know, it's not, unlike the situation in Maplewood where it was a homicide. Then yes, would a prosecutor possibly go before a judge and say, "But it's just like Councilwoman Castellino said, if you have video anyway, somebody, if a law enforcement agency thought it was relevant to solving a crime, they could get it." So again, what's amazing about this is, the way I understand it and the way we've discussed it is, it's like a reverse 911 call. There's been a rash of instances in your neighborhood. The police department can post it and say, "There's a rash of instances. We want you to be aware of them and this is the issue." That would only be done if Chief Abbott chose to do it. So again, from the administration's point of view, we respect everything you're saying and we will never stop being vigilant, as you know, and again, Chief Abbott is the testament to this. We haven't had one incident in so many years. I remember reading a pastor's email just a few weeks ago about people talking to him. He got pulled over, he talked to them, they understood it. He said, "Everybody understood what was going on." And nobody is available more than Chief Abbott to go out in the community, talk to people and try. But it will, it's a constant issue. But this decision tonight, when you look at the four corners of the resolution, it's saying that it's available to post in a neighborhood app that exists, so different as I see it than Facebook. Somebody wants to post on Facebook that their neighborhood was subject of car burglaries, they can do it now and all this is doing is allowing the police department to give truthful information rather than having rampant rumors. That's what's wrong with social media. Anybody can post anything and then it takes on a life of its own, you know, the Donald Trump theory of this stuff, as opposed to getting critical, real-time information from the law enforcement people who know what's going on to say, "Yes, there was a rash of car thefts in your neighborhood. Here's what you might want to do." As Mayor Parisi says, lock your doors, you know.
And we can't access, from what I understand, if I understand it correctly, we can't access what's been posted without an active case number. So if, if in your neighborhood, somebody with their biases puts off every young person of color that walks by their house, because maybe their house is real close to the street and activates the doorbell and they post the car, I can't see it anyway. I can only see it if I've had thefts in that neighborhood and you're part of the, of the program and you are part of it.
So just to your point, just I want to clarify, Maplewood does not have an MOU. They don't. And crimes are solved and have been solved with the Ring without having this memorandum of agreement because, because our police are well-trained. Again, and I'm going to stress it, this is not calling into question. Chief Abbott, Chief Abbott has always been very responsive to any of my inquiries with respect to the training with the Attorney General's Trust Directive and was actually proactive in getting that information to me before I even asked for it. So I certainly do appreciate that. I just want to be very clear that the case in Maplewood, the unfortunate double homicide was not solved because of the MOU, because they don't have one. I feel that we signing and understood completely. Can this help solve? Yes. But it also creates a circumstance that is potentially dangerous for our residents of color and that is what I am objecting to. I trust that our police officers are well-trained, our detectives know what they're doing and they can solve crimes without an MOU. That's just my position, but we're taking so long now.
We want to work with you, no matter what the result of the council is tonight, any MOU, we want to work with anybody in this community on any issue. And if you get a whiff of any of those issues, nobody has their cell phone on more than Chief Abbott and he'll sit with you and anybody else and you are right.
I would have been happy to answer the one young lady that got up and spoke to her. I would have been happy to, you know, she shot me an email or something. I would have went through each one of those because they were more questions than statements. You know, is this a Fourth Amendment violation? I would have answered every single one of them and sought the answers from the legal department and the prosecutor's office if I didn't have the information at hand.
Are there, are there any other questions for this?
I just want to make a comment-
Sure.
And chief could probably back me up on this because he works hand in hand with the school district still. You know, when I sat there for 10 years and we had relied on the cameras, whether there was a fight or an incident or whatnot, and you would hear, you know, that as far as any kind of bias, parents would be concerned about that. And the wind-up was, you know, you'd be surprised sometimes with, you know, with the results of it, that we haven't had any of those kind of, right now, since I haven't been in touch with that, but you have with them. I mean, we've been fortunate enough where we haven't had any of those kind of situations where it wasn't what they thought it was going to be. So let's hope, like I said, now, for me, if you have a neighbor that is, you know, not doing the right thing and they are still bringing it to the police, the only, you know, it makes it a little easier for them, but I think we have to outweigh the benefit to the community of the crimes we could be solving. And we could, again, if we see that it doesn't work out, we could, you know, pass another resolution to get rid of it. So for that reason, I'll support it. I don't see, this also is for any other, so we're not just promoting Amazon here, so it's any other-
This is between-
Us and them. So what about the other companies? Because I-
They would have to have their own MOU.
None of them have approaches.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that, I don't know of any other company that has developed this portal.
Okay.
Ring seems to be kind of the leader in the industry with this, the interior cameras. There's Nest and some other ones that are highly competitive with Ring, but for the doorbell, it seems like most people go out and buy a Ring. There are other ones. I'm not promoting one over the other. I'm just saying, Ring has this available to law enforcement and we would like to be able to have access to it.
But if there's one that becomes popular and it has a portal, we could always-
Absolutely.
-get that and pass that as well.
We're always going to be vigilant because Councilman is right. We need to be vigilant to make sure that everything is used correctly.
I will share one thing. We had that neighborhood meeting that we referenced earlier and the residents themselves were talking about this app that, because a lot of them have this and they, they upload and share it, so people are already doing it in the township now anyway.
Any other comments or questions or just, no? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 201-19?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes.
Okay.
I do want to say, though, I do have to say thank you, chief, but I do want to say thank you to Cindy because I just respect and hear what you are saying, but we were in a situation in my neighborhood that it was, and you still don't have access to this. It's still voluntary, so.
Correct.
Right, it's not mandatory.
No, I understand.
Police passion is always available.
It's very-
It's not who I wanted to vote for. I mean, you're incredible.
And we'll, and we'll watch them.
Thank you, thank you, chief.
Resolution-
Cindy, thank you, thank you for your passion though.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you for staying so late, chief.
Resolution 210-19, resolution authorizing the retention of David Kronheim to provide consulting services related to the township's planning for the next phase of the Rock Spring Golf Club. This was pulled by Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes, this one was pulled by myself. Okay. So I pulled this just to have a better understanding and I had a couple of questions with respect to retaining a consultant in connection for the township's planning for the next phase of Rock, Rock Spring Golf Club. So his scope of services is to review and evaluate proposals for use, development and/or redevelopment of all or portion of Rock Spring. In looking at his CV and maybe, not maybe, but you should clarify for me, in looking at his CV, I don't see that he is experienced or licensed in the area of planning, engineering or architect. So in his review and evaluation of proposals for use, I understand he would just be looking at it with a lens as someone who has some expertise in golfing clubs, correct?
Well, again, as you are well aware and as the mayor discussed with the council and the public from the beginning, we need to get to Phase Two.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's, this is the vehicle just to present, there's a zillion ideas out there, but we have to bring them into focus as to what the options are. And Mr. Kronheim, as you know, is the contract compliance officer now. In fact, I, I hope that later this week, we'll have his first report as to, you know, he makes site inspections, he communicates with Kemper all the time, he's obviously looking at the numbers like you are. So the short answer is, the difficulty with trying to come up with Phase Two is balancing all the different perspectives, balancing whether it has to become a nine hole hypothetically- all the different perspectives, balancing whether it has to become a nine-hole hypothetically, whether it can be reconfigured as an 18-hole, whether or not the bluff, you know, that, you know, we'll call it the Easterly, is the most likely or not likely or the least likely, whether the access issues. So the short answer is, the decision or the determination is that we need one person kind of quarterback. They're not going to make the decisions, but at least they're going to help put in the pieces of the puzzle and there may well be other consultants that need to be retained. But it's almost like we don't know what we don't know and we need to get going on this because as you know, we have a significant bond issue that we did get from the local finance board, a waiver of the 5% deposit, but part of that was conditioned that within the next, we'll call it 18 months now, we come up with a plan and obviously we're going to then want to get to the green acres issue that we've talked about, but we can't get to the green acres issue till we decide what portion, if any, will we develop. Part of also what we're looking at this season is how successful, you know, we know and at least we know that it's doing very well, not necessarily making money, but there are lots and lots of people who are playing golf there and having positive experiences. So the short answer is, Mr. Cronheim was the logical person because he helped take us from infancy or the embryo to where we are now. So therefore he has a lot of the history. He was at a lot of the community meetings, was at a lot of the council meetings and, you know, he's got one foot on the operator, watching what they're doing and maybe how that can be improved. So the fact that he's not a planner doesn't mean that we believe, we have confidence that he can help us through the next project, next part, but it doesn't mean he would be the person who would come up with renderings for a apartment building, so to speak, or whatnot. There's a lot of aspects like, you know, and again, we're still, you know, there's the agenda you've heard, you know, you know exactly what our issues are and what the tensions are, but we got to get going.
So I agree with you that we do have to get going. I just needed the clarification because you just clarified that it's not like he's going to be doing layouts for buildings or developments. When I read this as a consultant, I just wanted to make sure that that's what I understood, that he is consulting with respect to the development of the golf course alone, not that he's going to be consulting with the development of any housing that's going on there.
Well, again, as you know, it's 138 acres. It is all golf course now, so it's intricately intertwined. I'm not, again, if you have a, we want you to be part of the process, so if you have a recommendation or a thought, I think certainly the administration's thinking at this point is we need one quarterback. Doesn't mean he can run every play, but if we don't have one person who we can say, "Okay, here's the timeframe, that's why I can't remember if this is four or five months." But basically the goal indefinitely at the end of that period, that we can present options to the community and to you.
And I look forward to that too. So following up on what you just said, so is he expected to be the quarterback that goes out to seek proposals for the development of Rock Spring? Is that quarterbacking, part of his quarterbacking?
I don't, I don't know that we're that precise, and that's why I always love when people say, "Well, what's the plan?" We don't always have a plan. We have issues, we have challenges, we have incredible resources. So when you say, "I don't know that it would be," I think, I believe, this is just Richard Trank as town attorney has been involved in this, I think we need to make sure that we understand the market and what is possible. So I don't know that I can, we get calls all the time, by the way, just so you know, I'm sure you get calls all the time from people all over who have ideas. And now the question is, how do we call us all those ideas, recognize that we have a critical asset that we all, meaning the community, bought into taking this step? And now how do we put all that together? So I just hope that, the only agenda we have is to make good use of this time so that we can try to get as many options as possible so that you could ultimately make that decision.
Can I speak to this moment?
Sure.
You know, Cronheim is an expert on golf courses.
I've done some research.
And we know, we know that at least half of this course is going to stay as a golf course and probably, hopefully, two-thirds of it or three-quarters of it or whatever.
Coming from golf.
Everybody's asking for it to stay 18 holes.
His knowledge and expertise at this point is maybe more important than some of the other ones, but it's going to be a group effort. I mean, so that's, my thought was when I saw this, because I had somewhat the same questions, you need other people if you're going to have a development going on in here. But his expertise is critical throughout because a lot of this is going to remain a golf course. That's always been the plan and I assume that's going to stay the plan.
I hope so. And then lastly, how did we come up with the fees that he would be?
I negotiated and got what I thought was a reasonable rate and a reasonable timeframe. So again, that's really.
And this will be throughout the duration until the phase?
Well, it said August, November.
August to November and wrap it up. Okay. And I'm asking because I know that in that last resolution, it was a flat rate of $10,000 for the consulting. I just wanted to, and particularly since we were all just traumatized by the budget experience, I'm trying to be very conscious of what we're spending as we go along. Those were all my questions. Thank you.
Counselor? Yes, Counselor?
Just a couple of questions, actually more than a few. Looking at Mr. Cronheim's resume, he's a lawyer and he's got golf experience. A lot of what the mayor had talked about up until the purchase was that, was consideration of non-golf-related potential for the property. He was talking about an indoor athletic facility to do soccer. He was talking about the public works department up there. He was talking about the residential development. Those are all major issues to be addressed and from what I can see, he does not have a background in any of those three areas. So I sort of understand the concern. We're asking to hire a consultant who does not appear to have expertise in some of the areas that have already been talked about.
Again, so just so it's clear, I believe from the, from the information I'm aware of that it is not currently, again, you'll ultimately make that soon, but I do not believe that the administration intends to make a proposal to good public works on this site. That's my understanding and that we're actively exploring as many other possibilities and we'll talk about one of them on our executive session because you authorized appraisal of it and we got back and I circulated to you. So number one. Number two, though, with regard to these other items that you referred to, the rec center being the primary one, yes, we, that is certainly one of the options. Again, I'm not sure what the credentials would be for a rec center. I haven't seen that consulting specialty, but we do have obviously Mr. Lepore, Mr. Keo, we have Department Ed, Mr. Gross, it's a financial consideration. So all of the town administration will be quizzed in this process. So the fact that Mr. Cronheim is not an expert in rec centers or, again, he's not a DPW because we're not going to, we do not anticipate putting a DPW on the site, does not change the fact that, that having a consultant who understands the past and understands the issues and has heard them just like you have will be a positive, we believe, in moving this process forward. I respect what Councilwoman Matute Brown said is that we need to husband, you know, the concept of hiring 20 different consultants. Let's get somebody who knows where we've come from, knows where we're at and is analyzing how well we're doing to get to maybe in part the point that I think you raised during the whole process when you voted against it as to whether or not a whole golf course is viable. That it goes to Mr. Gager's point, you know, if in the end, we're going to shrink this course because of wanting to, you know, marry to this site, some of the other things that you mentioned, well, we need to have a pretty good handle on whether that will work. And I don't think we know that at this moment, at least I certainly haven't seen any analytics on that. You raised it at various points I recall during the process, so we need to, if we're going to consider that as one of the options, look at that a lot more carefully.
I just want to follow up on some of the questions I had asked before the, before the meeting. I wanted to get an idea of how much money we've paid Mr. Cronheim so far. Councilwoman mentioned the $10,000 contract, which was the initial one.
I think he gets a consulting, he gets in the contract, I had to bring it tonight. I can't remember if it's $1,000, $1,500 a month that's paid for, just like, that's paid for by Kemper, that's one of the expenses. You approved it as part of the contract.
And then, do you have that number of how much he's been paid so far?
He's only been paid 10 so far.
Any other money is, do you have that financial report you had earlier, probably somewhere there? Remember that financial report that we sent? It's an expense to the extent it's being paid.
It's not itemized.
Yeah, it's not itemized.
It's either $1,000 or $1,500 a month. I can't remember now. Could be $500. It's in the contract you approved.
Could you just talk a little bit about the elements that went into determining how the $3,500 a month fee seemed reasonable to you?
Well, if you figure under, I mean, if you figure, just do the hourly rate, any hourly rate you want, you know, again, as good as 35 hours a month if you.
Yeah, that's what we said it's paying.
Divide by 20 hours a month, it's 160 hours an hour. It's going to take at least 20 hours a month next to 40.
At least.
Again, we want him to be available to come to meetings before the council and go to public meetings and interact with different decisions.
And the rate, the 175, is that a market rate for golf consultants in New Jersey or?
21 dollars an hour.
Again, I think he's going to spend more than 20 hours. So again, I mean, again, he's spending more than 20 hours now. So again, I'm not.
20 hours of meetings, actually, some play hours a week.
As part of his contract with us, does he actually report the hours that he works for us?
He doesn't work for, he is a contract compliance officer whose job is to be available and to interact with Kemper and to review the reports and to make site inspections, just like Mr. DeBeau does at the recycling center. So again, that was the model that, so the short answer is, he's in constant contact with the mayor, with the business administrator, with myself and with all the other, with Chief Abbott, so on any issues. Short answer is no, he is not required. I do not support, as a matter of law department, just having people do time sheets. I've lived at it 20 years here and if I can get a flat fee from any professional, I like the flat fees. You get as much as you need and I call them first thing in the morning, the last thing of the day, every day of the week, and they mail me 32 times and they're on a flat fee. It helps from a budgeting point of view, it helps from reviewing time records and you've seen it before, so. Short answer is, this is a fixed fee contract with a end date in four months. It's a total contract of $14,000.
Exactly.
24/7, weekend nights.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you. I want to extend on what Mr. Trank was saying before about Mr. Cronheim too, because he does, when he was here to introduce himself, he talked about how many other sites that he has been to. And I think that would be helpful to see. I've already sent the mayor pictures of what Piscataway is doing, other townships with their recreational centers. So we see what's happening with other municipalities and their golf courses and if David's been to the, not necessarily that site, but if he's been to other sites, he would know what they're going through from other municipalities. When I pulled this originally though to ask my question, I had never seen this term in the resolution that says, "Whereas this award may be made in a non-fair, an open manner of..." Tell me what "non-fair"? I have never seen that term before.
Under the local public contracts law, as you know, once a year, we put out a request for proposals.
Right.
And that applies to people of this danger. Because we're doing it in the middle of the year, we did not put out a request. As you know, that doesn't require that we pick the lowest person or the highest person or the whatever person. So when you're going to award a contract like this in the middle of the year and you're not going to go out and RFP process, you're required in the resolution by the state to put that it's not been done in a fair and open process.
Okay. I hadn't seen it spelled out that way. My question is, in Mr. Cronheim's letter that is attached to this, in the second paragraph, it says that the consideration of this per month amount will commence at the date of this letter and the date of this letter is June 1st. So if this, I think that should be amended because it should be a date that we approve this.
Well, it's really August 1 because he started already, but the short answer is, we'll have to change from June to August.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just have a comment because I spent some time on the phone today about this. You know, I picked Mr. Trank's brain as also speak with some others. And just to help my colleagues, from what I understand and learned about golf courses and I always refer back to living with a crazy golfer myself, is that any, any option that comes available or idea that we have to consider, especially when it comes to moving these holes, Rock Spring has a great reputation of the play and the hole and how it's configured. So if various options come along, you know, it's, you know, it's time-consuming to figure out how you're going to get that same kind of, I guess, prestige play with this club and especially with the amenities. We want to make sure that we don't lose out on the amenities, that they're part of the plan. So I could see this, how time-consuming and tedious this can be just from listening in on a few conversations and brainstorming, but I am, you know, excited to see what's going to develop and I'm glad there is a short timetable on it because we do have to get that grant and that's, you know, been all our concern is to get, make sure that we're ready for that. My question though is going and my Counselwoman Krokowjak, I know you're the liaison to Open Space Commission, so going back to the other topic earlier with Ridge Road and open space funds, are we going to need any of that open space funds for any, anything for this plan moving forward? Do we know? I know it wasn't initially planned, but I just want to make sure that when we're pursuing another option for possibly another purchase, that that's not needed here. So that's something that I think.
To answer directly, there's nothing dedicated at this point in time.
Yes.
Because we can't. It's not that we would not have, but we can't because we can't at this point in time commit that property to open, the entire parcel to open space until we make a determination as ultimately what we're going to slice off or whatever. So having said that, moving forward, you know, you will, you will have to juggle, you know, to the extent that you're looking at other parcels to acquire and things to do in open space, you're going to have to juggle these funds accordingly because you're going to have a need for these funds for anything that you're going to acquire or have already acquired. So there will be a requirement, you know, there will be a need for funding future expenses which the Open Space Fund would accommodate that.
So yes, you need to decide that at some point. Are you more interested in preserving whatever, a part of this or all of this, or do you want to dedicate somewhere else?
Prioritize the list or prioritize your projects.
So, you know, and then how much money can we get, the denture can create, so.
Yeah, I mean, this year, with this year's allocation, monies and monies that are committed and putting aside some reserve because you don't want to spend your last. dollar, you probably, at this point in time, have a little bit shy of $900,000, including this year's lot. So, you know, that doesn't go very far, especially when you're looking at potential acquisitions of the plus.
Well, that's, yeah, so that was where my brain was going with not moving too forward with the resolution, is if we needed it here at all.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
But again, Mr. Gross is actually right. We can't use that or Green Acres money till we decide what portion of your 138 acres is gonna be permanently de-restricted and never developed. If you make that decision first, and then you say, okay, now we need X dollars, here's the value of it, and now here's where we're gonna get it from.
So, is the timetable we're looking at is November to figure that out? Well, we have that figured out?
That would be great.
I'm out of the crystal ball, but I mean...
Well, again, I don't remember, Mr. Gross and Mr. Searle, remember when the next cycle for Green Acres?
We actually already have an approved plan with Green Acres. What we have to do is now come up with the properties, the property that we want to acquire, we want to use that money for, and then what will happen is, we will automatically fall into the next cycle whenever that is. So, whenever we tell them, okay, this is it, this is the parcels we're protecting, we will fall in. Now, if there is a round next spring, if we're ready for that, then we could fit it for next spring. If that round doesn't occur to a year after that, we certainly should be ready by then. And we don't have, we don't have to have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed at that point in time, but we have to pretty well know what we're doing, you know, what, you know, we're...
In all respect, what we're talking about has nothing to do with this resolution.
Absolutely right.
So, can we just finish on this resolution, this open space and the Green Acres, and no disrespect, I'm just saying...
No, no, you're right. I could say that for pending matters.
We're trying to answer Councilwoman Matute Brown's question, and we're not. We're talking about, now we're going off on Green Acres. So, with everybody's permission, Madam Clerk, can we, Councilwoman, do you have any other future, okay? Any other questions on this resolution? Then, Madam Clerk, you move this for a vote, please.
Is there a motion to approve 210-19?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Corino?
Yes.
Resolution 211-19, resolution authorizing the retention of Antonelli Cantor as special alcoholic beverage control prosecutor. Councilwoman Matute Brown.
Okay, thank you. So, I pulled this resolution again so that we can have further discussion, also always looking at now the bottom line of what we're spending and keeping tabs on what we're approving. And I know Mr. Kaiser and I had a conversation as well some time ago with respect to the burden that the ABC matters are taking since you're on trial elsewhere. When I was, when I was doing some research with respect to the contracts that we have for, Mr. Trank, I am talking about you, you're welcome, the contract that we approved, and here's my question, why do we have to seek outside counsel? And I understand that Mr. Kaiser's not available, and he's expressed that. Why can't our township attorneys do this? And here's why I ask, on page six of your, of the contract of professional services that the council majority approved, 5119, scope of services, it speaks to all general legal services, including but not limited to enforcement of licensing, regulatory ordinances of the township, et cetera, representation in any and all judicial administrative proceedings, whether before a judge, arbitrator, or mediator, in which the township or any of its officers in their official capacity may have interests related matters. One member, when members of associates counsel other than Trank, and I'm saying that because it says Trank here, otherwise it'd say Mr. Trank, assist Trank in providing the township with general legal services other than litigation, other non-litigation special legal services for which counsel is separately retained, their services shall be provided at no additional cost to the township. And I ask, how come you're not able to provide those services, or have someone from your firm provide those services when we've already retained you and your...
The answer is, I absolutely can, and have the pass and look during the prosecution. I think probably Councilwoman McCartney is the only one there when Mr. Williams and I used to fight till to the death. The bottom line is, when that occurs, that's an issue of litigation, and you pay for that. So, you could easily pay me, and I could get an associate, or I'll do it myself, or whatnot. The reason in this case we determined to go with Antonelli Cantor is, number one, they are, there is, as I think Mr. Kaiser has indicated to you informally, and certainly to others, there's a backlog, and we need to get it out of the system. When we discuss this backlog, and one of the things that I think Mr. Kaiser recommended, and I certainly endorse, is, I would hope, I want all these charges brought by the end of August. I made that very clear to Antonelli, Mr. Antonelli, when I met with them with Chief Abbott last week. And I would appreciate, rather than shoehorning me to the end of a meeting like tonight when you are exhausted and can't, if you would pick a special day, either at the end of September, or the beginning of October, preferably like a Monday night or something, I guess was Mr. Kaiser's idea, and then we put them all on that day, because then it'll force everybody to be ready, it'll cause a lot of, if not all of them, to get settled. If not, I would recommend you start at, you know, 6 o'clock, and then we can just get these hearings done. So, the short answer, going back to your point, yes, our firm can do it, but I also believe in delegation. I believe that our firm is doing a lot of legal services that you are paying us for, and I do believe in this case, because of the backlog, that the appropriate way to go is to go to this firm, and in particular, Antonelli Cantor does do this, I think it was in the materials that I provided to the clerk, I don't know if they all got circulated, they are special ABC prosecutors in Trenton, and a number of other, I don't have those towns on the tip of my tongue, but they're doing this around the state. So, as you know, in some towns like Hoboken and whatnot, they have special ABC boards that aren't, the board counties were already working hundreds of hours on the resolutions and the ordinances and the policy issues. So, in this case, because of the backlog, again, as you saw, it's a cap of $10,000. I certainly believe you would end up paying us that same amount, or a similar amount, to do the services, and I want these off the docket, so to speak, as soon as possible. So, that's why we made the recommendation. Obviously, it's up to you to approve it, if you agree with recommendation under these particular circumstances. There are probably, I know in one of the emails, Mr. Kaiser pointed out, that one of the licensed owners, there may or may not be a sale of that license by the division, is that auction still planned?
Yes.
Okay. I can't believe that they will allow that license to be auctioned off, but it could happen, and that may well affect those pending charges, which is probably five of the 20 that I believe are still pending, but we'll know a lot more. Regardless, I want to get rid of all these pending charges. I don't think it's good to have violations. I don't think it's good to have violations that have been pending for this long, because, again, justice goes on. We need to get rid of them, because a lot of them are the same for the offenders, and they're not getting it. So, I want to get in here and do your job, and I want to see them prosecuted. The police department is doing their job. They've written up these charges, they're ready to go. We just have to put them in a format and serve them.
Okay, and the last thing I'll say, because I did look them up, and I didn't see that they, I saw the list of townships that they do work with, the municipalities, and the work that they do, I did. I didn't see where they were prosecutors in ABC matters, but the other thing I would suggest is that your rate is actually cheaper, less expensive, more conservative than their rate.
Twenty-five hours.
It's still 25 hours. And you will not, not under this contract anyway.
I know that.
But that was all I had. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 211-19?
No.
Take it. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Corino?
Yes.
So, we, just following that, one, I mean, I will ask the clerk to try to find a special day when you could do this, so we can remove these two systems.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Trank. Madam Clerk, move the agenda, please.
Ordinances on second and final reading, 2581-19, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, traffic subsection 7-32.1, handicap parking on streets in subsection 7-32.2, restricted parking zones of the revised general ordinances of West Orange, Mitchell Street, Watchung Avenue, Rollinson Street. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Corino?
Yes. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on ordinance 2581-19? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open the ordinance to my council colleagues. Any questions, comments?
No.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, move the ordinance.
Is there a motion to approve 2581-19?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Corino?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, 2582-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 54 of the revised general ordinances of West Orange, Mayor's Program for the Uniquely Gifted. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Corino?
Yes.
Very nice. 2583-19, an ordinance creating a reclassification in salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide, and establishing the employee's status as a township employee, and under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Corino?
Yes.
I'm sorry, ordinance 2584-19, bond ordinance for various capital improvements in and by the township of West Orange, appropriating $8,240,866, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $7,841, I'm sorry, $441 bond or notes of the townships to finance part at the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Corino?
Yes. Yes, Councilman.
Just ask my colleagues to take a look at one of the documents that Mr. Gross sent back to me today. It has to do with the detail of all of the proposed capital projects.
Oh, he sent it? What time, what time did that come out?
It was about 2:00. It was a shock, 2:21, something like that?
Yeah, I didn't get the chance to see it yet.
I didn't get a chance.
I had asked him to, yeah.
But anyway, it has a more detailed list of the capital projects, so...
Yeah.
You should take a look at those before the second...
Absolutely.
Sure. Thank you for the call, Councilman.
Because this is gonna, this would push up our outstanding debt to, I don't know, what, 95, 95 and a half million dollars? So, maybe we could be a little frugal here, maybe.
Madam Clerk?
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
I make a motion, we still have to do our executive session, so...
Oh, yeah, no, yeah. I hand it over.
Can I just do the quick follow-up? I thought I heard Mr. Gross say that the township has an approved plan with Green Acres.
I heard that too.
Yes.
That's matters pending, okay.
Could you please send that to us tomorrow?
It's a, it's a, it's not, it's not a plan.
It's an application.
It's a submission of a, I don't know what we submitted, it was before I got here. It's been an ongoing approval, so it's, that allows us to submit projects for consideration. So, it's sort of like a pre-approval that we have.
Place holder.
Okay, because I understood we didn't have a plan yet, but then, when I heard you say that, I appreciate the clarification.
Right. So, it doesn't really help, it just takes the doubt away as to, you know, when they go through their process, whether or not we're going to receive funds, we are going to receive funds, because we're already approved to receive funds. It's sort of like, it's almost like a home equity line of credit, if you will, for grants. So, but, you know, the project still has to qualify, we have to go through that whole process, that, you know, of what we select, but we're in line for money when we do.
Okay, so, is there, I wasn't aware that we actually had money towards this project.
Which we, are you referring to the golf course?
Yeah.
No, again, seriously, absolutely, we do not.
We don't have any, we don't have any money dedicated to the golf course. We're talking about Green Acres, just the Green Acres program.
There is nothing, like, so you will recall, Councilman, that at the beginning, one of the issues that Mr. Gross, Mr. Lepore, and the mayor were concerned about is, if we acquire the property, as we did, as you know, and we weren't ready to dedicate specifically part of the 138 acre, would that prejudice us in the next round in seeking it? So, there were many calls to the DCA and whatnot to talk about, and they said it would not. But they did not allocate some finite number and say, we're now approving it. They said, we will consider it later when you present a full application. I'm not sure, I think we're, there's some disconnect in the language you're using, Mr. Gross, is I think, Mr. Gross is talking about some generic, I don't know what...
There is a program within, there is a program within Green Acres where a municipality basically becomes pre-approved.
Okay.
And we have that...
But not a finite number.
But, but, well, it's not for a specific number, or not for a specific project.
Exactly.
And we will not submit this project until we're ready, but once we do, whatever we submit, it will receive funding, whatever, as that project would qualify.
So, like, for instance, one of the properties we had talked about at some point, seeking some money for, was, you know, the lot across on Tompkins and Mitchell that we now own? That's a lot of grassy area, I'm sure you're...
Oh, yeah, right next to the train station property.
It's down, it's in that carter, but we have not, will not submit for that, because we would not want it to prejudice our ability to get greater amounts with regards to Rock Spring or somewhere else.
We cannot, we cannot submit for a Green Acres application for anything until we resolve the issues with, with the golf course, because anything we do, we will have to then certify, we did something with another piece of property, we did something with Ridge Road, and, and we would then have to certify at that point in time that all of our recreation properties are now committed and on our Rossi, our open space inventory. And once we did that, the entire parcel would be committed, and that's why we cannot submit to Green Acres for anything until we resolve this.
Yes, thank you for the clarification. When it came out, you can understand how it caught our attention, but that's fine. I appreciate the clarification.
Using the word "plan" instead of an application.
Yeah, it's Green Acres versus the project.
So, if you don't mind jumping in, so, but with the open space money, would, like, that's totally different?
Well, it's different, it's the same. I can't spend open space money on, on the golf course. If I do, that commits it in its entirety to open, to a, open space as well, so it's the same jeopardy, different, different program, same jeopardy.
So, if we, once we know what we're carving out, then we could put that, we could put open space money, so then we have to be, I guess, mindful of what we spend that money on also. All right, good luck in your committee, right, people.
Okay. So, we're gonna go to the executive session under...
Well, now, can we do this, Mr. Trank?
Yeah, can we make a motion to enter into ABC?
Wait a minute, that's what I'm saying, can we just come out of this meeting, go in ABC, do ABC, go back in that, and do our executive session?
Yes.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion to adjourn the council, not, you know, and go into ABC?
Yes, I make a motion, second.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I did.
Councilwoman Mottu Brown.
I second you.
Sorry, I need to call you Cindy.
That's okay.
Fall in favor.
Aye.
Okay, Wes Songz, thank you for joining us tonight on our Township Council meeting. We look forward to seeing you in September. Have a great, safe rest of your summer. Remember the carnival at the high school for the football team and the cheerleading squad, and we look forward to seeing you in September.